I'm not sure that's John, he has a hat on.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. A hat, so.
A hat and tie, then he's just, he's coming in the casual one. All right. All right, well, you're getting close here. It's, uh...
That one one.
We're leaving.
That one one.
Huh?
That one one.
This is the, uh, regular, uh...
Thank you. Good evening. This is the City Council meeting and successor agency. On June ninth, 2020, City Council meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 2920. The City Council chambers will be closed to public pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order dated March seventeenth, 2020. The City Council is authorized to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and make meetings accessible electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and address the legislative body. All Brown Act provisions that require the physical presence of the City Council member or the public for City Council meetings are waived. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, would you take a roll, please?
Since we're all here, um, we don't have to do that, but I will since you asked.
If you would, please.
Councilmember Berthone.
Present.
Ebner.
Present.
Vienna.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Bedar.
Here.
Let the record reflect, all council members are in attendance.
Okay, oral communications? We have, uh, indicating we have two calls. By the way, this is John Ebner.
Can I make a quick comment about my return to the, uh, diocese?
Sure.
Oh, microphone. Very quickly, a brief comment. You know, you heard Emmett say as part of the, uh, thing about the, uh, the Governor's Order is that the councils do not have to meet in person or in session, and every city around here is meeting via Zoom or some other, uh, way of doing that remotely. Um, I know the council has decided not to do that, but, um, I'm glad to be back here, but I think that we should take some additional measures. I know that one city, Azusa, for example, when they return in a few weeks, they're still doing Zoom along with everybody else. They're putting some plexiglass panels between the council members, and I'm not sure, but that may mean that you don't have to wear the masks. Now, Ryan, you've got a great mask there, and I'm, I'm sure everybody's glad, you know, happy with their masks, but, uh, it might be nice if we could do something else, if there is a way of doing it, just to...
John, I'll just, uh, they actually did create a plat- a plexiglass thing that they had made for, and, uh, overall, we, we didn't like it.
It just didn't work.
But it, it's something that we definitely could talk about. They have the, the company that's all set up for it. Uh, I would, if it makes everybody comfortable and everybody wants to be here, then I'm certainly willing to take a look at it. So, that might be something you might talk with Brad about.
Sure, yeah, 'cause the, uh, the plexiglass outside looks great for the, uh, public counters and everything. All right, yeah, glad to be back in person.
Okay, first, first call?
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Hello?
We're gonna have that caller call us back.
Okay.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Jan Bartolo, and I'm calling tonight speaking as the Park and Recreation Commissioner and al- also as a long-term resident. I am just curious why during the public study session on the budget, there wasn't a period of time for oral communications? I'm not sure if that was just an oversight, but nonetheless, I have an opportunity to speak now, so that's fine. I was just curious, um, I heard a lot tonight about sixty-eight, sixty-nine, even ideally speaking, the seventy percent reserve number, but I was wondering where that came from? That seemed to be a comfort level, but the budget as presented, as I understood it tonight, was showing or reflecting a sixty-six percent reserve number, and I'm not so sure I'm understanding why an additional two or three percent added into the reserves seemed to create that much more of a comfort level since overall, it's somewhat of a negligible percentage. I did wanna also say that I noticed, um, that the Park and Recreation Budget across the board seemed to be the one that the City Council focused in the most on tonight, um, without, in my opinion, looking universally across all departmental budgets and possibly focusing on other areas where cuts or shortfalls could be offset without just specifically looking at the Park and Recreation Budget. I did wanna comment on the foot hill medians and acknowledge that anyone who will tell you when you're entering into a city along what is considered to be a major thoroughfare or gateway entrance, aesthetically pleasing and well-maintained landscape is essential, and if you leave Laverne and notice what they have done recently in their improvements and how Glendore's median looks, it appears when we drive into the city of San Dimas, we fall a little bit short. No fault of the Park and Recreation Department per se, but again, just bringing it up to where it should be, and so cutting that out of the budget or delaying it until September, I'm not so sure that that's the best option. Um, I did also wanna venture again with the urban forestry, fifty thousand dollars in the overall scheme of things is not that much money, and, uh, the, the Public Climate Partnership you discussed this evening, and I know a lot about that, but, uh, Director Kisterman had talked about approximately two hundred dollars per, per tree for, for planting, and in these economic trying times, uh, with people being out of work and, and all with COVID quarantine, relying on a person's financial generosity or donation cannot substitute or be considered a substitute for basically what the general fund should be allocating to offset a program that's essential. I'm not sure why trees seem to be minimalized or criminalized because, again, anybody who has understanding of the urban forest and the significant impact on a community understands that well-maintained trees obviously improve or improve the property value, and a mature tree, believe it or not, can, depending on the species, size, location, and other aspects, but it can easily have an appraised value of anywhere between a thousand to ten thousand dollars. Um, so it's not an insignificant thing when you look at overall, you're improving the value and many other benefits in the community. And then without going on any further, I did wanna note that Councilman Vienna had mentioned that he has repeatedly requested performance metrics he provided to us. I wanna let you know that I have sat at different Park and Recreation meetings where in fact Director Kisterman has presented the metrics. He's presented them as far as partition, excuse me, participation levels, the different events, different programs, um, and a lot of different numbers in regards to the respective departmental activities.
Jan?
I believe these are, this is why they haven't been...
Ms. Bartolo?
...brought in or brought to council's attention. I'm not aware. Anyway, I wanna thank you for your time, and I just wanna let you know I do consider, uh, the Park and Recreation, oh, time, huh?
So, yes, ma'am, uh, but I, I do wanna tell you that we did at the beginning of the meeting have a point for oral communications, and nobody called in.
Okay, well, then I'm sorry I missed that part, but sometimes it helps to be able to speak after you've heard the City Council's dialogue and commentary prior to necessarily the discussion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. It would be nice if I could also hear some response from the council as to my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any more? We have four more. All right, the next one?
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Hi, thank you. My name is Nicole Johnson, and I live and work in San Dimas. Um, I'm a proud member of the San Dimas community for twelve years now, and, um, a proud member of the Black community for far longer. Needless to say, um, encounters with racism in this particular city of San Dimas has been fairly commonplace for me, um, and sadly for, for my kids. Um, I've been called the N-word on a couple of occasions just by walking down the street in Old Town San Dimas and minding my own business. Um, the second time I was actually bike riding with my daughter, and both times the cars were just passing by, and both times I was equally shocked and appalled. Um, we support San Dimas. We support San Dimas businesses, schools, um, the local community with our tax dollars, and by volunteering our time, um, we raise our children here, and we should feel just as entitled and secure to be in, in the community as everyone else. Um, when we purchased our home here, I was kind of prepared, honestly, to be pulled over and asked what I was doing in this neighborhood, which has happened. I was prepared for people staring at me in stores, which has also happened, but what I wasn't really was prepared for as much was for my son to encounter such, um, instances of, of, you know, big trees at school. He had, um, the N-word written across his yearbook sophomore year at San Dimas High School, and it was supposed to be a prank, and the, the real person who put another kid up to it kinda suffered, you know, little or no consequences for that type of behavior. And, um, it's my hope that our local elected officials in San Dimas take a strong stand and put folks on notice that racism is not tolerated in this community any longer. Our kids are watching. We're, I know we're all exhausted by the recent events bringing about all this intense scrutiny, um, of the world as they wa- as we watched the Black man with his face down in the street pleading for mercy under the knee of a white police officer, whose sworn duty was to protect and serve the community. The whole world watched in horror, and his pleas went unanswered, and I know we're all exhausted right now, um, for having to endure all of this over and over again. But this time, people who have not been able to be aware of this dynamic of, of this treatment are now being made aware, and for the most part, they're not sleepwalking anymore, and we can't continue to sleepwalk through this. We actually have to do something. We actually have to do the deep, the slow, the intentional work to change, and hopefully in the city of San Dimas, we can be a part of that process. Um, Black lives matter, Black families matter, Black dreams matter, Black safety matters, Black lives matter. I mean, I wish I could, you know, read this and, and stay on this call that I don't fear reprisal or retaliation. I do. I hope I'm wrong, and I hope that the people of San Dimas can rally around their fellow neighbor and condemn and confront racism in all its hateful forms, and to embrace all of the community members, because, again, our children are watching. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Uh, if you would do me a favor and, uh, call the City Manager Brad McKinney tomorrow and, uh, give me a, an opportunity to get my, a number so I can talk with you, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have three more calls.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Thank you, and I wanna say, uh, good evening to, uh, all the council members present tonight, and my name is Norman Coulter. I am a, an English language arts teacher at San Dimas High School, and I am calling, obviously, in support of, uh, a recent statement made by Councilmember Ebner, uh, who stated at local protest that he would, um, suggest that the city adopt a resolution denouncing George Floyd's death, police brutality, racism, and injustice, and as an educator, I just wanted to off, offer perspective, um, based on how important that is. Um, as an educator, obviously, we are constantly, so, in the, we're privileged with the task of educating as the first group of people who come from all kinds of different paradigms and, and political worldviews, but, but I do think that the reason that this is so important is because of the humane space that this, um, issue kind of brings into the forefront. I think that it's been, one of the good things coming out of this time period has been the galvanization of, uh, our communities. We've seen allies emerge who maybe wouldn't typically see, um, it's created opportunities for conversation across racial lines and political lines, and, um, and I think at the end of the day, it is such a preventive measure for any city, um, that has not experienced that kind of, uh, malfeasance in law enforcement. You know, I, I think it's so important to be on the front end. As an, as an educator, you're, you're wor- you're always working to help cultivate the minds and hearts, not just educate, you know, uh, students who kinda don't wanna be in school. You're always trying to talk to students about the, the vitality of what they learn and how it is transformative for the communities they live in, and I work hard at that, but the limitation is that I'm, you know, I'm, I'm one of very few Black male teachers in America, and so I just wanted to call tonight to kind of express my endorsement of that. I do hope you'll take seriously taking this stand. I believe San Dimas does value the things necessary, uh, to really combat systemic racism. It is truly not mythical. It, it's something that exists, and, um, this proposal, I really, I think it stands to represent the values of the community, and I wanted to thank the guys for, uh, giving me a chance to sound off on that a little bit. Again, my name is Norman Coulter, um, teacher at San Dimas High School, English Language Arts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Hi, thank you. Um, I'm sorry, my name is Dorothy Arrington, and I have children who attend the Bonita Unified School District, um, and they've been in the district their, their whole, um, school, uh, time. I'm calling, uh, also for reform or some type of progress to be made in the racial disparity that happens, um, there in San Dimas, as well as in, in, in the Bonita Unified School District. And it's not for me to target one particular school, and which is why I say the district itself, because my children have experienced, um, uh, being called the N-word in elementary school. They, um, my daughter in the middle school, a kid had asked her, "Do you know what Black people and apples have in common?" They both hang from trees. Um, in high school, a student came up to her, uh, and told her that he wished that he were, um, an N-word like her, because she could wear her hair in different styles. So, it's just integrated into the, the schools. It's okay for the, for the, for the youth to say these things to them, at least they're thinking it's okay. Um, I did attempt to reach out to the VPs, to two of the VPs at the, uh, high school, and both, uh, VPs told me that they didn't know that, uh, any of this was going on, and I found that hard to believe because it's a population of about se- between seven and eight percent of African Americans, and me talking with other parents, they've had this same experience, so to have that. I then tried to, uh, merge a conversation with the principal, which he did reach out and talk with me, um, but his worry was, he did acknowledge that there was some tension and some concerns and worries, that even the teachers themselves were experiencing, teachers of color were experiencing, but his worry was if he moved too fast or if he said anything, that the teachers would revolt against him and possibly have him lose his job. So, whereas he's worried about losing his job, we have African-American boys, girls, girls, men, and women dying in the streets, literally, because there's no reform being done. There's nobody taking it, it's serious. Everybody's able to say, "Oh, well, that doesn't happen," or "Why don't they just do this," or "Why don't they just listen?" And in every instance in which I just said, there has been a person dying doing those exact things that they were supposed to be doing. So, we're asking that the, uh, that the committee works with the schools, or the council works with the schools, to give some type of training on implicit bias or, or unconscious bias, because I've seen it with the teachers, I've seen it with the students, and I've seen it with the parents. So, um, it's time for the, this, to take a stand, because, um, also being a parent, I'm also a licensed therapist, and I know the damage it can do to the youth who are supposed to be our future, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We have two more calls.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Hello, my name is Chloe Jones. I am seventeen years old, and I live in San Dimas. I'm calling in today to support a resolution from the city to denounce the death of George Floyd, racial injustice, and systematic racism. I've been a student at San Dimas High School for the past three years. Prior to that, I was a student at Southern Christian School in Covina, and before that, I attended a Department of Defense school out of state. I support this resolution because during my past three years at the high school, I have experienced racism in the form of microaggressions, implicit biases, and even racial slurs and stereotypes. This problem is not just limited to me as well. Many of the African-American students at the high school hear the same insults. These insults generally range from insensitive to blatantly racist, with students being called the N-word all throughout campus. In preparing for this, I reached out to present and former San Dimas students of all races, and it felt horrifying to hear all of their stories. One specific case that happened to me is I had a student who sat across from me in my AP World class tell me and my friends racist, anti-Semitic, and homophobic jokes all throughout the year, only to have our teacher laugh at them. Two other experiences I remember are one time during my freshman year, I had a boy tell me I was dark at night, and when I reported this to school administrators, nothing happened, and there were no consequences, which is commonly known to the students. This, the following year, I was complaining to my friends about something at a practice, and I had a boy tell me I was just mad because I was a Black woman and that I need to stop being a loud, angry Black girl. My little sister is going to be a freshman next year, and I would like for her to not have to hear these things and struggle with the appropriate way to react to them. I'm not speaking today to erase what happened to me, because there's no way to do that, but instead to address a system that ignores our cries for help, so that my sister, her friends, and all of the students who attend San Dimas long after I'm gone can have the experience that they deserve, one that is absent of the traumatic events of those that came before them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one more call, and if anybody else needs to call in, have them call in.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Uh, council, this is Mr. Gonzalez. How are you this evening? I'm glad to see you back. I have been asking for years that the council remove the charges that you charge people to run for an office. I have got some responses from, uh, council members, and basically they said, "We don't want any bozos running up for the City Council." If you could prove to me as an American, as a citizen of this city, that the money that you charge, which is close to two thousand dollars, covers whatever the county or anybody else charges us to have an election, and I'll bet you, well, just prove, prove, tell me, just tell me if you've got the guts to do it. The county charges us fifty or a hundred thousand dollars, and you collect ten thousand? That's not fair. If we wanna be a bozo, we can be a bozo, but you're discriminating against people who have no money. Every one of you is white? Everyone probably makes over a hundred thousand dollars a year? And if you look at the group of people who run this company, excuse me, this, the city, it's all white. I don't care what you say or you don't say, I'm Hispanic. I've talked to, I've ta- I'm telling you right now, I want an answer as to why you charge people to run for council, period. And I bet you you don't have the guts to do it. I wanna know how much the county charged us, and I wanna know how much we pay to cover that charge. That's my first thing. Personally, I don't think we should have any sort of, uh, whatever they call them out in the roads, on the street about the Black Lives Matter. I have talked to Mrs. Black, who is the, uh, City Clerk, and I've asked her to specifically talk to you and Mr. McKinnon about putting something on the, the website to say, "This is how you register to vote. This is how you get to mail in your stuff." You know what the pande- uh, pandemic thing going on? I don't think it's good for us to be out in the street getting sick, but I think every point that was made to, is, it just represents the city that we have, and I'm sad of it. I'm really sad of it. But let me tell you, there's nobody up there that's brown, there's nobody up there that's black, uh, there's nobody up there that's Asian, not that you have to do anything about it, but you should let people run for council. You are discriminating about people that don't have money, that may have something good to say, and I definitely think you should make the website show how you register to vote and how you register to vote through in the mail, and I think that we should make sure that we can register in the City Hall, and at the same time, we can sign up for mail, uh, voting in case this pandemic continues. Again, if you look at the core of the city, if you look at the core of the city of Glendore, the ci- the core of the city of Claremont, I don't know about Laverne, but the Blacks who put, the Black people are really put against, and believe me, I've been called a, a speck, a wetback, and a Mexican. So, this is the culture that we were born under. It has nothing to do with the Civil War. The Civil War was about money and tariffs that the North charged against the South, and it was about citizens doing what they wanted in their own state, but it's obviously you don't understand that. We don't like it. I don't like it. I'd like to see more Black employees, I'd like to see more Hispanic employees, and I'd like to be able to run for council without having to pay two thousand. And bless you for your hard work, and I bless everybody that came and, and said stuff tonight, because I'm taking to tell you, boys, you gotta do something about it.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. One, one more. Anybody who would like to call in, please feel free to call.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Good evening, City Council and members of the audience. Um, I was hoping if the movie in the park idea proposed by Mayor Protem Vienna and Councilman Weber is still in the works for the summer, given the relaxation of a lot of restrictions minus the wearing of masks and social distancing, I think the residents of San Dimas deserve a nice summer treat. Also, uh, could the residents get an update on Senator Weiner's bill SB 902? Uh, thank you, and I yield back the balance of my time. Bye.
Thank you. If you'd like to call, uh, I know you're gone, but if you, I'd like to call Brad McKinney, he can talk to you about, uh, Congressman Weiner's bill, and, uh, Mr. Kisterman?
Thank you for calling, you're live.
I'm live right now.
Hello?
Am I live right? Okay, 'cause I'm streaming in the other room, and I can still hear it, sorry.
Yeah, turn the TV, turn the streaming down. Yes, go ahead.
Hello?
Your, go ahead. You're live, but please go ahead and mute your TV and your, uh, computer, please.
Okay. It's in another room. Okay, hi, um, my name is Ellen Sider, and I am a local resident and an educator, and I just wanted to, um, echo another educator's support of John Ebner's resolution. Uh, I think that it is really important for the city of San Dimas to take a stand as an educator. I am really saddened to hear the students' experiences in Bonita Unified School District. I'm sure it's not only Bonita Unified, but I do think it's really important that we take a stand, and we, and we have action. Any teacher who is, um, aware of any kind of harassment or racist remarks in their classroom, um, should be disciplined. I'm a, and I'm a teacher, I'm, I'm horrified, honestly, to hear of the bad situation in Bonita right now. Um, again, I know I did, um, I didn't actually plan on calling in. I know you had a budget meeting. Uh, as a teacher, I'm a media teacher, and I stress to my students that it is their obligation, okay, as citizens, okay, and in the media that they actually create, to state, take a stand on issues, and if you do not take a stand and act, okay, you are basically saying that you agree, okay, with what's going on in the country. And it was wonderful to see in Laverne, there were about eight hundred protesters, well, five hundred to eight hundred, organized by a high school student, which so inspired me. They were, excuse me, they were chanting, "This is what democ- They were chanting, "This is what democracy looks like." I was so, so happy to see, um, students take these leadership roles. On the negative side, okay, and I know that you did have a budget meeting. We are under LA County Sheriff. So all you have to do is Google LA County Sheriff. And what you saw, um, in the demonstrations, um, what you've seen in the past has been a lot of corruption and lack of transparency. And I think that needs to be addressed also. I, I know that, you know, as a, a city that is under LA County Sheriff, we have to pay a lot of money for LA County Sheriff. And, um, like I said, that's all it takes, is a Google search. And I was unfortunately, um, found out a lot more information than I, than I wanted to about what actually has gone on. Um, and Villanueva says he wants transparency, but that doesn't actually look like what's actually happening. So, um, again, I applaud all of you. I have communicated, um, with the mayor and with the, um, captain, and I do really appreciate the Oka communications. San Dimas is a wonderful town, and I know you're gonna do your best to, um, to keep it that way and to address the issues that have been brought up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Siders. Nice talking to you again. Okay, we have one more.
Thank you for calling your live.
Good afternoon, City Council and community members. My name is Crystal Jones Bacon, and I am a San Dimas High School parent, secretary of the San Dimas GPSA, same single committee, and a concerned resident of this city. I am here today to support a resolution from the city of San Dimas denouncing the murder of George Floyd, police brutality, racism, and the ongoing injustices that continue to plague not only our great nation, but our small and mighty town as well. On Friday, June 5th, aside despite my hesitations, I attended the San Dimas protests in support of Black Lives Matter movement with my husband and both of our daughters. I say that we attended despite my hesitations because the evening prior, I had read the comments within our own San Dimas Buzz neighborhood group. Both bashing protesters as the look at me I need and want attention with a dismentality group statement, as well as the later deleted comments which advised residents to oppose, to be strapped as in risk their weapons. Despite the comments and possibility of violence, we attended as a family because I wanted to impart upon our daughters that their lives do in fact matter regardless of what their city, their school, their nation do or do not say. And I wanted to teach them that we must stand up for what is just and is right at any cost. The current situation in our nation and its continued systemic racism has infiltrated so deeply into our society as a whole that it is often disguised behind politics, financial issues, jokes, and the unconscious biases of so many. While I can utilize the remainder of my time to discuss our personal struggles and anecdotes of leaving restaurants after being seated and not served for extended amounts of time, my children get called racial slurs while inside classrooms where teachers and administrators hear, they are told, and nothing is done. Or lastly, the time that my then 12-year-old daughter and I parked at the library in San Dimas to play Harry Potter on our phone and were accosted by the LA Sheriff's Department, the same department that is here to protect and disturb us. I can talk about the quickness that a heartbeat with when you have to tell a 12-year-old to be prepared to record on a cell phone, not knowing if your name will be the next viral hashtag, and wonder if your daughters will be okay. I could talk about each of these events which occurred within this city in depth, but instead, I would like to discuss an event within our city which occurred exactly one month ago today. On May 9, 2020, the city of San Dimas fully supported a protest against Project Room Key. At, the protest was against the utilization of the motel sits as a place of rest for 118 of the homeless populations being relocated here from other cities. I say that the city of San Dimas fully supported this because at this protest, Mayor Bader and our council members all took turns at the megaphone, thanking San Dimas residents in attendance, advising that this, referencing protest, is how we get things done, and most importantly, that our city did not lack compassion. All of the city officials lauded this cause and supported the stopping of Project Room Key as keeping our city's public safety at the highest concern, protecting our children, ensuring the public safety of our elderly, and ensuring that everyone has the ability to safely be out within this community. I ask you now, City Council, does that compassion wished for safety and protection of our elderly and everyone include the people of color who reside within San Dimas's borders? I am here today not to support any political agenda, but I am here today to request that the city of San Dimas support this resolution and say enough is enough. We as a city cannot wait for the day that a tragedy or extreme injustice is knocking at our doorstep and filmed within our streets.
All right, ma'am.
Supporting a resolution to denounce the murder of George Floyd because Black Lives Matter does not mean no one else does. It means that all lives cannot matter.
Ma'am, ma'am. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Your time is up.
I'm telling you guys, and I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for calling in. Appreciate it. Got two more calls. We're gonna take as many calls that come in, so.
Thank you for calling your live.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gary Jackson. I live in San Dimas. I'm also, for, for over 25 years, I've also been a, a longtime 25-year coach at San Dimas High School. I'm here to support the resolution denouncing George Floyd's, George's, George Floyd's death, police brutality, and racism and injustice. Um, I was hesitant to call in and hesitant to support the march because I, because of the ramifications I felt of being a coach at the high school. Um, throughout my years here in San Dimas, there have been many instances of racism, whether just walking down the street and people throwing the N-word out at me for no reason at all. Um, I, I've seen it, but once, once it started to affect my, my children and, and, and their lives, I felt that now was the time to take a stand and make a change. Um, even at the Black Lives Matter rally on the other day, um, standing there with my son and, and my wife, it was, it was great to see the youth there, uh, taking a stand. But it was also very disheartening to see the many cars that drove by, both that weren't honking, were actually flipping us off and, and yelling racial slurs. So time, time is now to make a change. Um, I support the resolution, and I hope that, uh, the city council members and, and the city of San Dimas, let's take a stand and let's, let's move to the future because our, our youth are watching. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. We have one more call?
Thank you for calling your live.
Hi, my name is Nicole Grant, and I'm a teacher in San Dimas. And I'm calling to, um, have you guys support the resolution denouncing George Floyd's death, police brutality, racism, and injustice. I have, um, three biracial children in this district, and all three of them have experienced all different levels of racism in Benita Unified, even with me working in Benita. Um, my daughter, in the last three years in middle school, has been called all kinds of names. Um, N-word questions about, are they hotter because their skin is darker? Uh, you name it. Uh, they have said it to her jokes in the middle of class. Um, it got so bad that she would come home crying every day and didn't want to go to school anymore. My son attended San Dimas for his freshman and half of his sophomore year, and was called the N-word repeatedly, over and over again. And, um, he even had a science experiment where it was a bottle rocket, and they wrote the N-word all over his bottle rocket. Administration, um, just called me in, and they offered me duct tape for the solution to cover up the N-word on his bottle rocket, but no, uh, investigation on any of the incidents of the N-word has ever, ever taken place in Benita. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that people know that it does exist in Benita, that this is not something that doesn't happen in our district or in our city because it happens all the time. And I know from experience from my children and their friends, they feel hopeless that one's never gonna eradicate it, that the kids are gonna call them those names every day, and that, uh, we're not gonna be able to make a difference to make them feel safe at school or in the city. And I just want you guys to know that it's real, that these kids have real fears every day in San Dimas. So thank you for your time.
No, thank you, ma'am. Any more? No? We'll give it about one more minute to see if anybody wants to call in. One more call?
Thank you for calling your live.
Uh, yes, my name is, uh, Reverend Hesley. I live in the city of San Dimas since 1977. And I used to be a friend of Reverend White there, the African-American church there at San Dimas. And I can tell you from experience that when I bought my new home here in 1977, I had a Mercedes, another Mercedes, in, above four. I was, uh, uh, I was the district manager of an insurance company, and somebody wrote "Nigga Mobile" on the back of my car. And, uh, and this is the middle of the night. I don't know who wrote it on there. And I lived, lived here since 1977. And I have experienced, as a minister now, racism in the city of San Dimas. As a matter of fact, two weeks ago, somebody yelled the N-word as I was driving down, down to the bank. And so this is something that we, uh, uh, as the city of San Dimas are here for 40 years, that this is uncalled for. This is a nice city, and, but there is racism in the city of San Dimas.
Thank you, sir. Any more? About 30 seconds. Okay? I know it's uncommon to, uh, make a statement, a brief statement, uh, about, uh, all the calls that were coming in. Every one of those calls, or the majority of those calls, referred to a resolution. And I, as the mayor of this city, have heard nothing about a resolution. I don't know where that came from. Uh, it sounds to me like Councilman Ebner said something about it at the demo, but I don't know. What I would assure like to have known about a resolution that the, the folks are talking about would have been nice to see.
I'll be making a comment about the resolution during my comments and getting it on the agenda for next meeting. Advised by the city attorney that we could not talk about it this time, so I won't talk about the resolution. But I did tell people at the protest that I intended to bring a resolution talking about this issue. And again, I won't go into details about the resolution because it's not on the agenda. And I, so I apologize to the audience who might have been thinking they were gonna hear about it today. But I will be making comments about the situation later on.
It, it was in the newspaper.
It was not, yeah, not only did I, 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 as the only member of the city council who attended the protest, say that I would do it. And I know, Emmett, you came at the very end.
I, John, I was there for the entire day, the entire day, okay?
Actually, when I was there at 12 o'clock, Emmett was there.
The entire day. I never left.
Okay. Didn't see you there, Emmett.
No.
I, I spoke and said I was gonna introduce a resolution to the city council. That's where people heard about it. I haven't been making calls to people about it at all, but apparently the word got out.
Thank you, John.
And you, if you were there, you would have heard me say that.
John, I was there. I wasn't in the front line like you, okay? But I was there total.
I, I apologize.
People talked to me, many people talked to me.
I apologize for.
Thank you, John.
Not thinking. You were there. People told me they didn't see you, but that's...
All right, consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion unless a member of the city council requests separate discussion.
Uh, be sure to look at the last item, which is the San Gable Valley Cog update. And then I move approval.
Mayor, mayor, before we, uh, move approval of the consent calendar, I do have to make a statement pursuant to Brown Act requirement regarding item 4C. So item 4C is an action that affects the salary and compensation of a local agency executive. The recommendation is to consider approval of the item, and a yes vote by the council will approve the item.
So are you saying we need a voice vote?
No, I'm, that's just a statement that's required by the Brown Act to make before we consider the consent calendar tonight. Now you can go forward with approving it as normal. Unless Councilmember, uh, Bertone wanted to pull the watershed item?
No, no, no. I, I just want people to look at the San Gable Valley Cog, uh, update. That's all.
Super. Do I have a, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed by a 5-0 vote, okay? End of consent calendar. Other business, specific plan 23 moratorium?
It's Director of Community Development, Henry Ngo, will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Ms. McKinnon. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. Um, as directed by the city council at the last city council study session on May 26, 2020, um, staff is bringing forward two ordinances tonight to repeal the specific plan 23 moratorium. Um, there are two ordinances that are, uh, provided. Ordinance number 1279, which is for planning area one, which are the two westerly properties. And ordinance 1280 is, uh, for the packing house property. And this is done so, uh, Councilmember Ebner can recuse himself from the, uh, packing house, planning area two. Uh, before the, uh, the city council makes a motion, there is a revision that's before the city council on the two ordinances. Um, this is just to relocate the last whereas, where it states whereas the temporary moratorium adopted by the city of San Dimas ordinance 1272 and extended by city of San Dimas ordinance number 1273 is hereby repealed effective immediately upon adoption of this ordinance. This is relocated to be below the now therefore that the city council of San Dimas of California does ordain as follows. So that was done on both ordinances. Um, as well as the city received a comment letter from the public. Uh, this was done, uh, received from Mr. Paul Johnson, who is a member and partner of the M&amp;E property, which is the packing house property. Um, in this letter, he just states that he requests the lifting of the moratorium, which we're proposing tonight, as well as his opposition to the, uh, potential proposed, uh, specific plan 23 amendments. Uh, we will include the public comments in the public hearing and staff reports. They'll be brought before the Planning Commission and City Council in the near future. Uh, this concludes staff's presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions?
So just to be clear on this item, we need to split it into two parts just like we've always done for this, uh, with the first part being the two westerly properties, and Councilmember Ebner can participate and vote in that. And then we can have any discussion of the easternmost packing house property. And Councilmember Ebner will have to recuse himself and leave the room before we start that.
So are they both covered under 1279, or is it, one's 1280?
One's 1280. 1279 is for the westerly.
So 1279 is for the two?
The two, and then 1280 is for the packing house.
Okay. Any, any, any discussion? Okay, would you read the, uh, ordinance 1279 by title?
Ordinance 1279. An ordinance of the city council of the city of San Dimas County of Los Angeles, California, repealing moratorium on establishment of all uses, expansion of existing uses, and development or modification on new or existing structures in the specific plan number 23, planning area one. planning area one, specifically one five five North Euclid Avenue, one two seven North Acacia Street, one five nine North Acacia Street, chapter eighteen point five three eight of the San Dimas municipal code.
Move, uh, is this document, is it ready for the reading?
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed by a five zero.
I'll recuse myself for this one.
Okay.
So just for the record, councilmember Ebner is recusing himself because he owns property within five hundred feet.
Thank you. Ordinance twelve eighty? Okay, uh, would you read, would you read ordinance twelve eighty?
Ordinance twelve eighty. An ordinance of the city council of the city of San Dimas County of Los Angeles, California, repealing moratorium on establishment of all uses, expansion of existing uses, and development or modification on new or existing structures in the specific plan number twenty-three, planning area two, specifically one, one one five North Cataract Avenue, chapter eighteen point five three eight of the San Dimas municipal code.
Move approval, wait for the reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed four to, four to zero, or four to one, Councilman Ebner recused himself and abstained. Thank you, John. Report on Inland Valley Society contract?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I think there's, was there still one more action? Or no? The repeal on twenty-three planning area two? Is that what we just did?
That's what you just, yeah.
You did both of them.
We did both of them at once?
Correct.
My bad. Sorry. Thanks.
Report from the staff on Inland Valley Humane?
It's Mayor, City Councilmembers Brad McKinnon, acting city manager. In April two thousand and twenty, the city became aware of Inland Valley Humane's proposal for a gross cost billing model that the city council initially supported, and the proposed increase was reflected in the preliminary budget that was actually presented to you tonight. On May fifteenth, staff has notified that Inland Valley Humane Society had proposed and received approval from their board to move back to the current billing model with only a CPI increase if all the renewing cities agreed to the, to the increase in certain new fees, which included the unaltered dog license and penalty fees, late penalty fees. This was a roughly nine thousand dollar increase. This was described as an alternative billing schedule to reduce costs if all the cities agreed to the fee increases, but not a man, mandate to continue service with Inland Valley Humane. Inland Valley Humane informed the city that they would need an answer by May twenty-first, which, per city council direction on May twentieth, Inland Valley was notified the next day of the city council's desire not to increase the fees per the proposed alternative fee schedule. Since then, the city has been informed by Inland Valley Humane Society that all the other participating cities, Claremont, Laverne, Glendora, Moncler, Chino, Diamond Bar, Ontario, and Pomona, have agreed to increase the fees and to only be charged the, the annual CPI increase this year. Additionally, staff was informed that Inland Valley Humane Society shifted their original statement that, that renewing cities had an either or for all cities, and because the city of San Dimas is the only city to voice opposition for the proposed fee increase, the city is now being mandated to implement the fee increase if we choose to continue service with Inland Valley Humane. On May twenty-second, Inland Valley Humane indicated that unless the city increases, sorry, proposed fees, they will no longer provide animal control care services to the community. Inland Valley Humane also indicated that the fee increases are mandated, and they will not allow the city go to a month-to-month model if we were to transition to a different provider. Inland Valley has proposed that all impacted city raise their unaltered dog fee to a hundred dollars, and the late penalty fee to sixty. For the city of San Dimas, that means increase in the unaltered dog license from forty-five dollars to a hundred, and the late penalty fee from thirty-five to sixty dollars. All other fees may remain the same at the direction of city council. In the staff report that is presented tonight, there is a chart that outlines the current fees from the other renewing cities, and in that chart, it identifies that almost all of the other cities are doubling their unaltered dog registration fee. To provide options to the, the city council, staff reached out to animal control care providers in surrounding regions to research whether they could serve our community. These included the Los Angeles County Department of Animal Care and Control, Southeast Area Animal Control Authority, Pasadena Humane Society, the city of Upland Animal Shelter, and the city of Rancho Cucamonga Animal Shelter. Due to the, the quick timeframe and turnaround, to date, only the county of Los Angeles was able to provide the city with the estimate cost for service, which was, was roughly two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, or forty-six thousand dollars more than what Inland Valley Humane Society is proposing. The other potential service providers have indicated that they may take three to four months to fully analyze whether they can provide services to the city and provide a cost estimate. The existing county of Los Angeles animal control fee schedule is also attached to the report. In conversations with county staff, they indicated that the unaltered dog license would be sixty dollars, and the penalty late fee could stay the same. However, they advised staff that they are in the process of potentially raising their fees to be exactly what Inland Valley Humane Society is, is recommending we do to continue service. Southeast Area Animal Control Authority has indicated that they may, may be willing to provide the city of San Dimas with animal control services, but the lengthy, lengthy distance of, they're about roughly thirty miles from San Dimas because it's in Downey may be hindrance to, to our community. The Pasadena Humane Society, as previously indicated above, will not be able to provide cost estimates or analyze whether they're able to provide services for a few months. The cities of Rancho Cucamonga and Upland will not be able to provide the services because they're located in San Bernardino County, and therefore they will have to modify their communication software, informational items, and policies to be compatible, consistent with the county of Los Angeles and the city of San Dimas. Based on the information we currently have, the county would be the only other option. However, there's a few factors. They're located in Baldwin Park and would require the community to commute to Baldwin Park. They're currently forty-six thousand dollars more than what Inland Valley Humane Society is proposing, and I've heard from other cities that currently have the county that they're being, they're preparing that those costs might double in the next couple of years based on the county's reimbursement model. And they are also looking at increasing the fees to exactly what Inland Valley Humane Society is asking us to do. With that, staff is recommending the city council provide direction regarding the proposed Inland Valley Humane Society animal license fee amendment. And with this direction, staff could incorporate those changes into the final budget and bring back any necessary fee adjustments. This would save, which, what's in the current proposed budget, which we discussed earlier, roughly eighty thousand dollars if we decided to go with Inland Valley in this new proposed costing model. So with that, that concludes my report, and happy to answer any questions.
No any questions?
So the Inland Valley is now charging us a hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
That is what they're proposing to charge us, if we increase those two fees.
So that's considerably less than the others.
That's considerably less than the county, which is the only other one we have a-
You know, the Inland Valley Humane Society has improved considerably over the last years, and I think it's well respected. I know the Pasadena one is also well respected, but that's so far away, I don't think we want our people to go to Pasadena to deal with animal problems. I would recommend that we stay with Inland Valley. I don't see another alternative, really.
I don't think there is an alternative right now, and, and, and I agree with you, Dennis. I mean, the only thing I could think about, and this is, just talked about with Brad briefly today, is if some of the cities might want to get together and form their own animal control service. I don't know if that's possible, how much it would cost, or, or what. And then you get into, well, what kind of service would that be? If, if we were going to go that way, I would want it to be a no-kill animal control place, but, so all those issues, but where we are right now, we don't have a choice as far as I can tell. So this is what we've gotta do.
So we're talking a one-year contract?
Correct. This is a, a one-year contract, and we would bring back the, if, at council's direction, bring back the, the change in the fees to the hundred dollars and the sixty dollars, and incorporate that change into the budget, if that's council's wishes.
I'd like to see Siaka's study, and what their cost would be ultimately, in the end. I mean, I understand if we do this for a year, that's fine, but I'd be curious to see if Siaka could provide the services, since licensing can be done remotely. So, I mean, the only thing you're really talking about is going out there for any other issue that wouldn't be done.
I, I would like to continue. We're gonna, we're not gonna stop getting the proposals from these other, other agencies. However, due to the timeframe and not being able to go month-to-month, recommending that we go with Inland Valley, but continue to get the cost estimates from the other-
Yeah, I like John's idea, too. If we formed a, an animal control through some sort of agreement with our neighboring cities, I'd be curious what that would cost. I don't know about all of the positions, but I definitely could have the discussion about getting it, uh-
Discussion item.
You know, getting that dialogue going.
I'm on board with exploring any option that we have. Again, I think our options are limited right now, but if, anything that we can do to form a partnership with communities in the area, I think would be positive. I, I know my experience in Glendora, most of the interactions I've had with people, and, and specifically regarding their interactions with Inland Valley have been overwhelmingly negative. But one thing that I, I think was our reservation when we brought this up at the, at the last meeting was kind of a poor customer service model at, in the valley. I don't know if they perhaps addressed that when we, when we talked to them about the contract.
They, and I, and I haven't heard a lot of those concerns, but they're open to improving their customer service. They didn't know that there was an issue from my, my conversations with their director, but they'd be happy if, if I could provide what our concerns are and issues, and, and they'll address those or have a response to, to those concerns.
Well, I would make a motion that we approve a one-year contract with Inland Valley.
Mayor, we, we should see if there's any public comment before the council makes a decision.
Do we have any public comment? We'll give about the two minutes to, for anyone to call in. The phone number's on the, on the television screen, I believe. Nobody? Okay, we'll bring it back. Any, any further comments? The only thing I'd like to say is that for a period of time, I heard real positive things about, about inland. People liked it, you know, they were receptive. Unfortunately, I would say the last six to eight months, I've heard nothing but negative. People will say that their people called, their, the people are rude, they, they don't answer it, and I would hope that our staff would infer, and you know, when they're talking to the, the new CEO, is that, point out that, you know, I get very few positive comments. Okay? But unfortunately, something changed in the attitude, and, you know, I hate to be, you know, kinda negative about it, but it seemed like it changed when they changed CEOs. So I would hope it's more positive, and I'm gonna support this because I don't really truly believe we have another option right now, but I also would support what John was saying about looking, you know, amongst our other communities to, just to see if there's something that we can do. I'm not sure financially how that's gonna work, you know, but I, I would, you know, I would support such, you know, this bill.
Mayor, city council, so I will talk to other surrounding communities. The thing is with forming the JPA, you need, it's a big cost. You need the land to start up the whole program, if there's interest out there. Inland Valley Humane also said that they'd be available next, at our next council meeting to come and make a presentation, and hear directly from, from the council in the community, if, if that would be helpful as, as well.
I would request that. I think they should come, they have a lot of services. They have a veterinarian service there that they do low-cost neutering and spading, and someone should come and explain to the city council all the services that they offer. In fact, I'm surprised that they didn't volunteer to do that after they heard that we were upset. It would have been good on their part to have initiated that.
And, and Councilman Bertone, they did say that they'd be available to come as soon as we had, had this conversation with them. They are at other council meetings tonight, and they had already been assigned to different council meetings, so they said they'd be available at the next one, so I'm here, and I will have them here to, to present their services to you and, and hear directly from the council.
I don't think that's gonna affect the vote, though. I think-
No, no.
We're gonna move, move for it, but at least it would be a nice presentation that they could-
Right.
Explain to, or, you know, and, and give us a little bit of insight on, on how they're doing business now. So, bringing it back to the council, is there a motion?
I made a motion.
Second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have to have a, a voiced roll call vote?
No, because, no, because all five councilmembers are in the room.
Thank you. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, four to, four to one vote, with four, four, and with Councilman Vienna, voting no. We move forward. Summer programming, twenty twenty proposal?
Yes, Mayor, city council. Tim Pagano, our recreation managers, can we present this item?
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, thank you for having me here tonight. Since late March, the city has worked to develop modified city programming and facility program. During this time, the Parks and Recreation Department, specifically the Recreation Services Division, has continued to serve as a vital resource throughout the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The Recreation Division has incorporated virtual programming to serve the community and remain responsive during this crisis. Some examples of this include the Easter egg hunt rec-dash, the virtual Arbor Day, just to name a few. And in addition, we've modified our very well-received summer lunch program, or our senior lunch program, excuse me, and our San Dimas Cares Project. Before you today is the Parks and Recreation Programming Proposal for Summer twenty twenty. The proposal combines virtual and in-person programming offerings while being mindful of current social distancing guidelines. Most virtual programming began this week and will begin, or will begin within the next few weeks. For example, our virtual recreation day camp has forty-two youth participants registered at this point. In-person programming is proposed to begin July sixth, and the programs selected were chosen, chosen intentionally to assist the San Dimas community as stages of reopening move forward. Lastly, in this proposal, there, we have provided a community drive-in event that is being proposed to take place at Horse Thief Canyon Park at the beginning of August. I would be happy to provide any additional information on the proposal before you, or answer any, any questions that you may have at this time.
Questions of staff?
Well, I like the, the creativity and everything the Parks and Recreation Department's doing to just try to make the summer program as good as it can be. It, it looked like there might be some in-person drop-in things. What are those gonna look like? I think that was way at the end, kind of in mid-July to August.
Correct. We will proceed with the traditional summer camp offering as what we've done in the past. The way that we're gonna mitigate it to enforce social distancing guidelines is to cap the number of participants, while we wouldn't wanna do that because we realize that this is gonna be a service that the community needs, just to be, you know, cognizant of what's going on in our world. That was where our staff, when- That was where our staff, when we started the planning process in late March, really felt that we could achieve and be successful in delivering these services. In addition to the Lidera Sarah Camp, there will also be the Traditional Pioneer Camp, which will be a drop-in program so that members of the community can take advantage of that as well. So those are the two in-person day camp offerings that we will be providing for this summer if the proposal is approved.
All right, thanks.
Any, any further questions?
I was just gonna ask on the drive-in proposal. The value added, or the added value elements, can you cover those really quick and just give kind of a conceptual?
Sure.
Idea, item 4C, page five.
Let me just turn right there. So in, in order to really build this out, one of the things that we realized that, you know, especially as we're going through the reopening stages, that we wanted to include as much of the community as possible. So one of the things that we are exploring and haven't really started discussing yet was trying to incorporate a, a number of small businesses to be a part of the, the event, trying to see if they would be able to come up and provide whatever service that they provide, mostly food service, restaurants and everything. Also, try to include some of the local breweries that are a part of our community, again, as an added value to the overall event and the experience. Other things that are fun in nature and just recreation in nature is encouraging the community to dress up in the movie characters that we would be showing. But that is also something that we would engage the community on in, you know, virtually asking them which direction they would like us to go in as far as what the selection of the movie is. So we have a, a built-out campaign to where we can engage the community in a very thoughtful way and make this as much of their event as it is the one that we would like to provide for them.
That's pretty cool. Good job on getting this all together. I think it's coming together pretty nicely.
Thank you.
So if, if you reach out to the breweries, we gotta do an ABC licensing?
Yeah, that would be incorporated into that. And, you know, once we get approval from council, we'll also talk with the Sheriff's Department and the CAT team to make sure that, and our Public Works Department as well, so that we're making sure that we're crossing all of our Ts and dotting all of our Is with regards to the logistics. Obviously, what was presented to the council was a conceptual plan as far as how we would deliver it based on rough estimates of distance and space. But to answer your question directly, yes, the ABC licensing would come into play as well as working with our Sheriff's Department and also our Public Works Department.
Good, I appreciate, appreciate the work you guys are doing on this. But let me tell you, it's no secret. Everybody in San Dimas thinks we're, we're gonna put together a drive-in theater movie, some type of option. So they're, most people who've mentioned it absolutely think you guys are fabulous for even coming up and thinking about that. So I commend you for thinking ahead because it's gonna be, it can't be anything else but a success you guys working at.
Well, we look forward to meeting their expectations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd move then unless anyone has anything else that we, the Parks and Rec proceed with their summer programming 2020 proposal.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries five-zero. Okay. Let's see. Okay, San Dimas Recreation Center use and associated budget impacts?
Yes, Mayor, City Council. Parks and Rec Director Hector Kishman is gonna come up and present that item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. At the May twenty-six, twenty-twenty budget study session, the city council reviewed budget, the budget proposed by the Parks and Recreation Department and briefly discussed the operational and financial impacts associated with possibly closing the rec center and how that would impact the community. The council requested more information from staff and specifically requested that staff meet to discuss the impacts that would be created from the closure of the San Dimas rec center to the high school, being that the high school used that facility for their aquatics programming such as swim and PE as well as the boys' and girls' water polo. Some background on the rec center. It has been around since nineteen seventy-nine when, I guess, groundbreaking began and then opened the doors for the community in nineteen eighty-one. Since then, the rec center has served thousands of community members of all ages. Just to familiarize everyone that may not know where this site is, it's, it's between, kind of sandwiched in between the San Dimas High School and the Lone Hill Middle School. And it is located about, just under two acres. And a lot of times, people mistake that for a part of the complex of, of the high school or middle school. The programming that's offered there, that was offered prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, was from Monday, it was seven days a week. But the busiest days being Monday through Friday between the hours of six AM and six PM. The programming, the programming included the aquatics classes held by the city, lap swimming, contract classes such as Zumba and yoga, a gymnasium as well as racquetball courts. The center also serves the middle school and high school. The middle school has a lot of their students go there for student union, which is a early teenage group of, of kids that meet there and have fun after, after school, playing games, watching movies or, or playing video games. Maintenance and operations for the facility include daily custodial services, routine facility repairs and pool maintenance, which consists of the daily inspections or checks by a certified pool operator as required by the county LA Health Department. Last, or this fiscal year, the council appropriated about a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in CIP funding to repair some of the damaged components at the center. It's important to note that due to the pandemic, the, caused by the COVID-19, the city has temporarily closed all of these, of its facilities, which include the center. Some of the repairs that, that were done this fiscal year include substantial repairs such as the steam room boiler, the exterior fascia repair, some lighting, as well as the partition in the girls' restroom. In January twenty-twenty, staff began the twenty, fiscal year twenty, twenty, twenty-one budget process and taken into consideration some of the long-term perspectives of the department and the city, established those to organizational goals, focused decisions on results and outcomes and, you know, promote, through the promotion of effective communication with stakeholders. In our meeting with San Dimas High School, it was noted that closure of the pool would negatively impact boys' and girls' water polo, physical education and special needs classes. The programs for water polo and swimming run year-round. Boys' and girls' water polo run on opposite seasons. The competition pool, which is used daily between one-thirty and five-thirty. And then on game days, they run a bit, a little bit longer. San Dimas High School also uses the pool for summer water polo practice. This is how they get their students or their athletes ready for the seasons, by getting into the pool sooner before school starts. And that is used Monday through Thursday for a couple of hours by those water polo teams. PE classes run about four to five hours daily, and those are usually in the fall. So altogether, this impacts about two-hundred-seventy-five students. And then the special needs class, which uses the facility four to six weeks a year, is, would impact about twelve to eighteen students. In addition to, the high school does also use the gym to have their athletes, student athletes there work out and exercise. San Dimas High School has expressed concern should the rec center close because it would create serious issues for them to find another facility to practice at. They have, in times when the rec center has been unavailable due to maintenance or disrepair and shutdowns of the facility, have had to go to surrounding communities such as Hacienda Heights and Diamond Bar. So for your consideration, it, you should know that there are six core services which are offered at the rec center. Those include the recreational aquatics programs, the Aqua Contract classes, the joint use agreement with San Dimas High School, the student union. There are also third-party facility rentals and then the racquetball and fitness contract classes. The report also has some further detail and explanation as to each one of those activities or core services. There's a snapshot of the five-year revenue that were, that was produced at the rec center starting from twenty-fourteen, fifteen fiscal year through the nineteen-twenty fiscal year, which we only counted up to December. Last year was a, a stellar year by, by accounts, I guess, compared to the two previous years in that we increased our revenues through the swim classes and aquatics programming. And that was due to the outreach and marketing campaign of our rec center coordinator. The expenditures are also noted there in, in operations for, starting in fiscal year fourteen, fifteen through nineteen-twenty. If you'd like a more comprehensive view or review of those numbers, you can find those in Appendix B.
You know where it says costs associated? What does the CIP stand for?
Capital Improvement Project?
Thank you.
You read my mind, Dennis. I was wondering the same thing.
So, so when we look at the expenditures twenty-fourteen, fifteen through nineteen-twenty, we're, we're saying that because of COVID-19 and everything, we went to July to December eighty-one thousand. And you're saying that the total cost of the operation for nineteen-twenty is predicted to be eight-hundred-and-forty-four thousand?
Correct. That includes the CIP projects. Keep in mind, that also is staffing cost and then regular daily operations.
Super, thank you.
Okay. So having had the conversation with the, not only the high school representative, but also in, in a conversation I had with the Assistant Superintendent of Operations, I believe is her title, Susan Hume. It was discussed that the joint use agreement with the district goes back many years. And it is due for an update. Right now, there are three or four different agreements for different things with the school district. For example, SPLEX is its own agreement. The parking lot use at the high school is its own agreement. There's the overall, kind of overarching recreation programming agreement. And there's one other agreement. So it was prior to COVID-19, we had had a meeting with, with the school district to ask for their input and feedback on consolidating and just making one overarching agreement that would cover each of those components. And they were open to that and really welcomed the idea. So that is on my to-do list. However, it was also explained to them that the cost of the facility far exceed their contribution, which is roughly thirty-eight thousand dollars a year for the use of the facility. Before you, in the facility use options, there are three options. Option one is the option where everything would close. And that was presented in the emergency budget. So in order just to simply keep the, the pool running, meaning don't, you know, don't drain it and keep it operational because of the negative impacts it would have by shutting, you know, and draining the pool or not operating it with a certified pool operator, make sure, you know, can, pool water chemistry is good and everything, is roughly a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Option number two, which is to run it strictly like an aquatics facility. So by doing so, we would be able to, one, meet San Dimas High School's needs in their aquatics program and water polo teams, as well as holding our swim or aquatics recreation, the city's recreation programs. Keeping in mind that the revenue that is raised at the rec center is primarily from the swim classes. So I would say eighty percent of the revenues for that facility are from the aquatics or swim classes. However, keeping the doors open and running it simply as an aquatics facility would still require some capital improvement projects or CIP in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars. In the original budget presented to council, not the emergency budget, there was a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar CIP request, which included repairs to non-pool-related items. So this new cost or estimate is based on things that would be used, money that would be used to repair aquatics or pool-related things, such as the replastering, the, the pumps and HVAC system which feeds the locker rooms and the restrooms. That total is six-hundred thousand dollars. And then you have, back to the option three, which is what we presented at the original budget presentation, which amounts to approximately one-point-four million dollars, seven-hundred thousand of it being those CIPs or capital improvement projects that I mentioned. It's important to also note that if we only did it as an aquatics facility, that would mean there would be no student union or Zumba classes. And the gymnasium would only be used by the high school. The weight room, I should say. So there are, there's, there's a lesser need for labor or staffing hours. And that's why personnel cost in option number two is roughly a hundred and fifty thousand as opposed to option three, which is the full programming at three-hundred-and-sixty thousand. Of course, this implies that there are some financial Of course, this implies that there are some financial impacts and budget actions that are required from the council. In our earlier study session, staff presented a, a budget proposal which took into account option number two. Should the council decide to go with option one, you would see a reduction in the, in the budget request, which could probably get you to the seventy percent desired general fund reserve. Or if you decided to keep everything open as is, there would be a reflection in the opposite direction in the general fund reserve. The department is continuously looking for ways to improve. We are striving to up our game in all aspects of programs, events, facility maintenance and community outreach. It is the mission of the department to be in alignment with the city's mission statement, which says the city council and all city employees are committed to well-maintained facilities and being responsive to the needs of the residents by providing necessary programs. Tonight, staff recommends that the city council consider facility option two to designate the center, San Dimas Rec Center, as an aquatics operation facility starting July first. This option creates significant return on investment by allowing staff to optimize the center while maintaining a mutually beneficial business relationship with the school district, specifically San Dimas High School, and provide the ability to continue to make positive impact on the San Dimas community. Recommendation, the second recommendation is to direct staff to continue discussions with the school district to negotiate the amount that they're contributing. They are open to, you know, negotiations on that, realizing that should the center remain open as an aquatics facility, they are very huge beneficiaries of that. And so are willing to look at increasing their contribution to the, to the center. Staff has been meeting with different surrounding communities, having discussions as what is considered a fair market rate for the rental of facilities or for allowing, you know, in those joint use agreements to see what, you know, the fee structures are. We've also explored communications with service providers that could run the facility as, as per discussion that we had with council member Weber when he, when he was out there and brought that idea to light, which I thought was a very good idea. So there are third parties, vendors who run rec centers or aquatics facilities, which could mean another possible or potential savings. However, a, in order for that to happen, one of the first things they do is a risk assessment of the facility and that would be required in order for them to even consider that, you know, taking on that facility. And the third item was the request for, for a full-time coordinator as it was presented in the budget earlier, which who, which would optimize the facility operation and program because they would be directly tied to that facility, focused solely and, and mostly and on the rec center use, on facility rentals and bringing in more revenues with the, all of our city facilities, which right now are under, underused. And, you know, continue this relationship we have with the school district who are, you know, play a, play a big part in the community. So that concludes my report and I am open for any questions at this time.
I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
In option number two, that does not include anything that the school district is going to pay then?
That's, that's correct. We did not subtract any, any of those costs.
We did not subtract it. Okay. So it actually be less than that if they agreed to pay for some part of it?
That's right.
Thank you.
Hector, with a, if you go with option two, is there any chance of doing anything else like, like the senior fitness classes in the other part of the building?
So the other, the therapy pool is used on, on a daily basis. It doesn't really, as far as, you know, we work with Mount SAC. They're, they're the ones who, who have the instructors for that. Not a big revenue generator, but it serves a, a large demographic with their water aerobics and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that's good. Aren't there some senior, like you mentioned the Zumba, but aren't there some programs that, that seniors in particular use or geared towards seniors in the exercise room and?
Yeah, the, the yoga and the Zumba. I mean, I've, I'm terrible with age, but I would say that they are, you know, probably fit that category.
Yeah. I was just wondering if we, if there were some, there were some limited classes like that, if we felt that those would, would be especially good for a certain part of the population that might really welcome them.
It, there, there is and, and I mean, it's important to, to note that facilities in general are expensive to, you know, to keep open, keep the lights on. Aquatics facilities are even bigger, you know, require more financial obligation. Those classes do not historically typically create return on investment. They're more of a service, you know, for the community because in some cases there are two participants.
Right. Well, that's what I'm asking. How much more would we, you know, just in rough numbers, would it make sense? Is it going to cost like a thousand dollars for the year? Five thousand or something like that if we just, if there were some classes that you felt, as your department might look at and say, hey, these are some really valuable
Yes.
things for the participants, you know, because they?
Absolutely. No, and, and we're exploring other options. You know, the, the San Dimas Senior slash Community Center
Right.
is a facility that is underutilized and, and we would love to have more activity there in the evenings. Typically, it closes at, you know, five o'clock and then it's, it's empty. So maybe that's where we have those classes and incorporate with other things going on here at the civic center.
Okay. Yeah, that, just something to think about. That's great. Otherwise, option two, as far as I'm concerned, seems unfortunately like the way we've got to go.
Ryan, you got anything?
Option two.
Hey, I, I just want to speak, say that as far as I know, okay, the Zumba class and probably some other classes are being performed here in the Plummer Building. They were done over there for a while and it wasn't working out for them. So they eventually came here. There was a parking issue and things like that. So those type of activities could probably be incorporated into, like you said, the, the senior building, the Plummer Building. So I don't think we lose that. What I was wondering is, and John would know more about this than I do, years ago, we really pushed hard for a student union. Okay? In fact, we were looking at buildings in the Flintstone thing and we were looking all over. So my question would be, is there a reason why our student union couldn't also be moved to one of these locations? And I don't know. I'm just thinking about it. You know, we're, we're talking about displacing them and I'm, 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 I'm really kind of supportive of this aquatic center theory. Because after you, you mentioned it a couple of weeks ago or somebody mentioned it during the, during things, I got numerous emails from people reaching out saying, what a hell of an idea. You know, maybe that's what we need to do because the other facilities were so worn out. You know, the, nobody uses the racquetball courts or, or the other stuff or the equipment. You know, we have aged, aged out equipment over there. And so people started talking about this could be, you know, a destination place for aquatic activities and stuff. So there's lots of people out there to, to support it. I, I would go with option two, but I also want to recommend that we, we look at, if we're going to actually seriously talk about a aquatics-type center, I would like to see a subcommittee of this council along with somebody from the school district, somebody from Parks and Rec Commission, okay? And, and, and some, you know, some of our, the high schools, water polo teams and a couple of members of the community, you know, maybe six, seven, eight people, where they actually sit down with you and create what is a good thing. There's a lot of people out there who have probably good ideas and I don't know anything about an aquatic center. I barely can swim. The reality is there's lots of people, after comments were made two weeks ago, who, who said, hey, my kids have been involved in this their whole career and, and what a great idea. Now, I'm sure there are going to be people who think that have been using the, the rec center for many, many years or are going to have some concerns, but we, maybe we need to look at some of these other options about using some of our facilities here. And I know that you guys are pushing to get more and more activities in the Plummer Building, more, you know, tax, not, not tax, but, you know, money renovated things. But I also believe that, that as I heard Kurt Morris say a million times, city buildings aren't to make money. They're, they're to serve the services of the community. And they don't, you know, we don't want to lose on them, but we're not making, it's not an issue to make money. They're traditionally lose money. But that's what we're, we're looking at. So I'd vote for option two if, if that's going to help you at all.
I'm absolutely on board with option two and I also fielded a lot of those emails from people in the community that were concerned about the, the aquatics programming. And I, I think a subcommittee would absolutely, absolutely be a great way for us to get insight as to what the community wants out of that building.
And I just got one additional question, Hector. Realizing the place is closed now, but who's been running it? What position on our staff has been over there as the, basically the full-time manager of keeping the place open? What, what, which position is that?
It's a, it's a coordinator. It's more specifically Jeff, Jeff Fried.
And what's, what's his title?
His, it's, it's coordinator. It's not specific to the aquatic facility because keep in mind that the coordinators also all contribute to the different special events. There's not like a special events coordinator. So their time is not, you know, specifically or strictly dedicated to one function or another. Ideally, when we looked at the organization and organizational restructuring, these are the things that we took into account was more specific to each site. And that's why we were requesting the additional coordinator because then that aquatics coordinator would be focused on training so that, because safety is the biggest issue or component to a, a good aquatics program. You know, you don't want to have a, a program that is not safe. And so, you know, the proper training and the outreach and getting people there to maximize its facility. So that person would be for that purpose. And then the additional, or should say right now, the other coordinator would be the one that would be trying to get more use out of all the other facilities to generate more revenues and to then focus also on special events so that then their focus would be special events and facility rentals. So that, that's why there was that thought. But to answer your question, it's, it's been Jeff Fried. And on the student union question, Mayor, the, the reason why it's conducive to have it, you know, to having it there is because most of those kids walk, walk there and then they hang out there and wait for their parents to come pick them up. If it was somewhere over here, it would be more difficult.
Is a space that's used for the student union used a hundred percent for the student union, nothing else?
Correct.
So that would make it difficult to have it anywhere else where you'd be sharing it with someone?
Yeah, that, that room is specifically for the student union. And, you know, I mean, some, there are times when you go there in the afternoons when it is, when it is packed. And, and so, but that requires staffing as well, you know? Kids aren't just there by themselves. So by removing that component, the after-school, you know, program there, you then don't need the staff. So that's why you see a reduction in cost.
Well, is that, so is that a temporary closing of the facility like that? Are we going to revisit this half year through or?
Well, I mean, it, I guess a lot depends on how the economy turns around, right?
Yeah, I'd definitely like to talk about it at our mid-year budget review, just see how we're doing because the student union is important. And I know you're doing a recreational needs assessment and this plays into it. I know it's a zillion dollars, but, you know, just redoing that entire facility is probably something that we would, if we had our, had a lot of money, we would do. And that could include a dedicated youth center, part of the building or something like that, as well as a whole bunch of other stuff, but, and better pools. But, but I just wanted to make sure this wasn't a permanent closure because that student union, like you say, is popular and, and it's a, it's a great thing for the city.
So the, the hope is that the recreation needs assessment will be concluded in, in October. And we, you know, our marketing and outreach has, has really hit a lot of people. Despite the fact that I, you know, I'm the one on the video, people are still choosing to go and look at it. That, you know, we're getting thousands of views on it and people are going to start their, you know, participation into hearing. So we're, we'll hear from the community as to what they're looking for. And with regards to the zillion dollars, it, it is a substantial, huge amount of money and investment into a new facility. But there are, you know, options out there, you know, the, you know, private-public partnerships, all kinds of different ways that, that, you know, the city council could consider funding for that.
But we, well, you know, I, I agree with John that, you know, there's, we, we, we got to stop putting the Band-Aid on. We need to figure out where we want to go and what direction. And that's partly why I'm proposing that, that we start looking at, at a subcommittee of, of these folks. And then I know we have the Parks, Parks Commission and, you know, they're getting here and someone's going here. Reality is maybe we, we put something together who is, to assist you in talking about what the community really wants. And then we start, you know, instead of a Band-Aid, we start fixing it. Because the, the student union is probably, in my opinion, is probably as important as any part of that over there. Okay, so it may come down to we just have to do something with the aquatics part of it first and then we start looking at the reality of fixing it. But putting a Band-Aid on it, we've been putting Band-Aids on it for the last twenty years. So.
Yeah, that's a good thought and, and I, much like the Urban Forest Subcommittee that we have, which in that, you know, in that committee is where we were discussing the private-public partnership there with the fundraising as well for the urban forest. This, a subcommittee of that fashion would be, would be very welcome and it would just kind of dovetail onto the park recreation needs assessment. I, you know, I, I think I'd be more than, more than glad to, to assist in that and staff, you know, participating in, in getting that together. It would be great if the council could appoint someone maybe to be the liaison or, or to chair that for us. So.
I think we'll have a discussion about that, but I'm not sure right now. It's a, they, they have too much time. But the school district, the school district, they're the main, are a big benefactor of this thing. They, they get a lot of it and we're talking about keeping this aquatic water thing open mainly because of the school district, because they, they do it. So they need to be a part of this conversation too. You know, I don't know, I don't understand, I don't really know how financially they can do it because it's school money versus city money. If we can do the partnership, I got no idea. That would be between the. be between the district and, and our staff to figure out if there was a way to do it. Probably our, our city attorney would have to get involved. But the reality is, we want to do this for the whole community, but the school district benefits by having that pool there. And otherwise, they're going to have to build a pool someday. Otherwise, they're going to, they're going to have to do away with their programs. I think it'd be a lot better if we got together together and put it together.
I will add that, you know, two things. One, I think what you said near the end was important, that I think we need to see the Parks and Rec needs assessment first before this takes off. Because to Emmett's point that's being brought up, is that I'm not so sure how much of the community at large really uses all of that as much as the school district. And if the school district is in fact the primary user, then maybe it's something that the city should consider transitioning over to the district. And, you know, I just, the, the dollars and cents of it may not pan out for the city, but it seems to make perfect sense by all of the emails that somehow flooded all of our emails regarding the academic programs that are going on there. And so, you know, I, I think it's a great asset. It's very clear it's being used by a lot of youth and through the school district. And, and so if that makes more sense, then I'd love to see that versus, you know, what your needs assessment finds from the community at large and being able to bifurcate out what is attached to a school program versus what's actually being used by community members at large.
Correct.
And to the second point about committees, you know, we appoint all these people to commissions and, you know, like the equestrian commission, for example, and we hardly ever ask them to do anything. And so, you know, I would almost, you know, just offer up a thought that maybe it is something we ask the Parks and Rec Commission to do. And, you know, engage with whomever other representation we need from the school district or wherever else. But I just, you know, I know these people come often to our commission meetings and are chopping at the bit to do something, you know? So those are my thoughts on that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
You can go sit down now.
Thank you.
All right, the, do we have a consensus that at this point, we're looking at option number two?
Mayor, we should see whether there's public comment.
Okay. We'll open it up for public comment. Phone number is on the television. If you'd like to call, we'll give you about two, three minutes here to call us in.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Mr. Bedar, in regards to the gym recreation center, do we, we still have a sportsplex account, don't we, with the school, the high school?
Gil, I, I don't know what, what, what association we have with them. Maybe the staff could fill me in on that, fill us in?
Yeah, I have a little trouble hearing you. But I, I think the city has been involved with the, with the school and they used to call it sportsplex. And I'm wondering whether or not the recreation center is part of that contract that we have with, with the school district under the sportsplex program. If you could answer that, I would appreciate it. Any one of your staff could call me. The other thing is, is I totally agree with you about having a, a conference of some kind, but I would also, besides the park and recreation people, include people from the senior center, not the senior center, but the, whatever we have, organization for the seniors. The other thing that we may want to consider having some of our local businesses that run gyms talk with us. If we could get some help from them to charge maybe less for people to go to their gyms, that would eliminate some problems for us. And also, just like the sportsplex or the gyms and the, you know, we have softball teams that go to the baseball teams in the back where the public could still come use the pool. When my daughter was at St. Lucie's, that's where they used to workout. It's right there. It's a wonderful, wonderful pool. And also we have, my wife took the, the kids there for mother and whatever they call kids programs. And we advertise under our city rules that we hire instructors, lifeguards, and so on and so forth. So basically, I'd like to turn more of the responsibility over to the school district if you could work something out under the sportsplex program. And if you do have meetings, I want to include the seniors. I think that the programs, the zumbas and whatever they do, yoga, this should be up at the plumber building. But I think it should be just for the sports people. I think the public would have an access to it in many places, you know, from six to eight or something and then later in the evening. And also, we could train some of our local high school people to become life, lifeguards and instructors and that type of stuff. Because having a pool even for residents is very, very, very expensive. I would also like to see if we do have these meetings, that we have a floor plan or a map, what the building is to see if we have to hire somebody to look at it. And I don't know whether this is a budget item that has to be decided tonight, but I would ask for a continuation of it if it has to be. And come up with some kind of a program where we can discuss how it could be tied in with the school district and transfer some of the other programs for the seniors to the city hall area. And that's what I would ask you to do is to ask for, you know, rescheduling of this discussion at a later time. I love the, I love the pool. I think it should stay with the school district. I think that should change with the sportsplex contract. And I think the school district would love it. And I still think the public can use the pools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. You know, and I, one of the things that came to me is that our seniors, we do have a seniors aquatics zumba program or whatever, some type of deep-water aerobics. And so we do have seniors and quite honestly, I've been over there and I've seen as many as 50, 60 in the pool at one time. So it is used and it's a program that we offer with an instructor and everything. So there's a lot of things that can come out, a lot of good things can come out of all of this. And, and I appreciate the conversation.
Just to, I just respond to Mr. Gonzalez. The, I think he may be referring to the joint use agreement that there is between the city and, and the school district. And that's one of those agreements that I said that we will try to fold into one agreement because the, the splex agreement, which covers only the, the splex, right, not including the football field, is for use of after the school hours, after school hours and programs that the city then runs their programs there. And they share in the cost of the maintenance of that facility mostly and wholly really on, on the landscape contract cost, which is $30,000 a year. Any CIP, like this year, we did the softball fields and next year we will do the baseball fields, they split by in 50, you know, 50%. So it's 50/50 for any work there, such as the resurfacing of the tennis courts, which will happen in fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Over there at the sportsplex, we no longer do anything on the varsity field, right?
We do not. No. That, we do, we mow it. Yes, we do. We mow it. But they, a few years back, they enclosed it and, and then we could no longer use it.
Okay, so we're using all the other four or five fields there for after?
Yeah, there's two baseball, two softball, and then an overlay soccer field.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, we have three calls.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilman. My name is Reinhard Kohler, and I work for Southern California Edison. I have a recommendation for your panel that you're putting together. Perhaps look into solar roof, you know, panels that could aid in heating the pool and also essentially you have to keep the pool lit too for county regulations. And that will offset quite a bit of your expenditures.
Thank you. I see our staff's making a note of that right now.
Thank you much.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for caring, calling in.
Bye-bye.
Two more calls.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nicole Vienna. I'm probably best known as Ryan Vienna's wife. So I just wanted to say good evening to Mayor Bedar, councilmembers Bertone, Ebner, Vienna, and Weber, and city staff. First, I wanted to say that I stand with the San Dimas community, the law enforcement community, and the country in general regarding the outrage of George Floyd's death. Unfortunately, my husband and I were unable to attend the protest as they were held during the middle of a workday. Not only that, but my husband was out there working during this time on the very front line of where people were protesting and throwing objects at him and his coworkers while they stood there and supported the peaceful citizens' rights to protest. He has worked 11 days straight, 12 hours a day with no time off. Tomorrow, March 12. Therefore, like some others that were not in attendance at the San Dimas protest, this does not mean that we or others don't support the need for change. I want to acknowledge that there are many lanes to fight systemic racism. Going to a protest is just one. Making a statement or a resolution is just one. At the end of the day, I believe that if we want to move forward, we as citizens in the community need to suggest tangible solutions and ideas to change. We need to write the legislature. We need to visit the local PDs and do a write-along. We need to talk with our council members and discuss experiences and ideas. I know for a fact that Ryan is available for all calls. And trust me, he would gladly take a coffee meeting with anyone to talk about the city's needs. In closing, I want to acknowledge and recognize the council for housing the National Guard and taking good care of them during this time. When I spoke to many of them over the week, they stated that they have never been treated with such good hospitality in any town they have been to. And as the sister of an active-duty military member who is often away from home, I know how much it means to their families to know that a city such as San Dimas took care of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Got another call? One more call?
Good evening, council. This is Esmeralda Salazar here in San Dimas. And how is everyone today? I would like to start out, more of why I called is more of a statement and a personal experience. First of all, I wanted to thank Mayor Bedar for bringing up the student union. You may know that I raised five kids here in San Dimas and they went through the, you know, the schools, different schools. Lone Hill Middle School is a big supporter of the, the kids that go there after school. I, my, all of my children with used the student union. Not only was it a safe place, they could wait for me instead of in front of the school or at Target if I was running late. But I think student union is a very important part of this recreation center. Not only that, it also, one of my children became very involved with this city and the city events because of teen action, where the kids could volunteer and get service hours for school. It's a place they could go, do their homework, be with other kids. So it's a very important part of investing in our youth, especially in these times that we are in. So I would hope that the city council, whatever decision we come to, that, that you do work in something for, to keep student union going. And basically, I understand there's a financial issue, but if there could be other alternatives or maybe a third-party company. I know years ago, I used YMCA for a little while for my children after school. I was a single mom. So I needed that, that extra support and a safe place that my kids could wait for me till I got off work or could get to the school. So I thank you. I just wanted to make that statement. And I would hope that you consider other avenues for the student union instead of just closing it down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anymore? Okay. We'll take, we'll take one more call. Okay? Because I think we've gotten now into oral communications versus the oral communications on this issue. Well, maybe I'm wrong, but, okay.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Okay, thank you. Hello? Anyone there?
Hello.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello. You sound like you're in the basement. Hello?
Hi.
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear us?
Okay, thank you. This is Julie Salazar calling in.
Okay, thank you. Hello?
Julie, you have to turn off your streaming.
Okay, let me do that.
And we're on the student union right now or the rec center. General, general oral communications are later.
My suggestion is to look into the, are you part of the seniors, the Silver Sneakers program through Medicare and the insurance companies?
Yes. Yes, we are, Julie.
Okay, because I thought that might be a great supplemental, you know, way to make some money. And since I'm on, I wanted to thank John for being active out in the march in front of the city hall. It was nice to see some of the city represented out there. We were out there and it was nice to see activity in the city.
Out in the march in front of the city hall, it was nice to see some of the city represented out there. We were out there and it was nice to see.
Julie, you still with us?
I'm still here.
Okay, we're, I think we're listening to your TV or streaming in the background. You gotta, do you have something else you'd like to add, please?
No, no, that's good. I just really want with a new city manager and a new mayor and some of the other representatives to be out there, be active, be involved, you know, be out in the middle of the activities because it's really important, not only to the city, but to the surrounding areas. When the organizer asked to see the representatives out there, they were under the impression at first that there was no other representative out there. And then John came forward. So I really want the city represented when we have these kind of activities because it's very important.
I understand, Julie. I just want you to know that I spoke with Mr. Copeland, the guy who organized it several times during that day.
Okay. I was just saying that we were there live and they were calling the city out, making it a negative, that there wasn't anybody out there representing the city. So we actually had John go forward to make sure that the citizens out there knew that there was somebody out there representing the city and that the city cared.
Super. I understand and I'll thank John.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Okay, anymore? Nothing more. I'm going to give it about 30 seconds. That's it. Anything else? Do we have a consensus or do we need a vote?
We've got three recommendations here, it looks like. So do we want to vote them all together or? I can make a motion that we accept staff's recommendations, one, two, and three. And that includes option two, discussions with the, the school district, and... And that includes option two, discussions with the, the school district, and request to hire a full-time coordinator.
I think the, uh, I could go along with one and two myself. I have no problem. I think three is a part of the budget, budget hearings, and I'm not sure if that recreation coordinator is, is a part of the, uh, uh, new proposed positions. I guess I'd have to ask Hector that.
Yes, sir, yes. That's the, that's one of the two new positions that were.
So let me then, uh, ma- amend the motion, if that's okay, and I'll, I'll move that we accept staff's recommendations, one and two, which includes facility use option two and the discussions with the school district about the facility use agreement. Okay?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, uh, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Recommendations, one and two, pass five zero?
And I'm, I'm getting the feeling that, uh, so three, the request of, for hiring a full-time coordinator, was discussed, and I believe that's gonna be either, what, it's not gonna be in the budget?
Not, well, that, well, it was my proposal's not, not to have that into the budget, but to revisit it in September.
Got it. So that's sort of a moot point at this time. So I believe we're going to just pass on that, on doing anything about option number three right now.
That's, that's what I would think, but I'll, I'll listen to anybody that has something to say.
Okay?
All right, we'll move on. Okay, consideration of a contract for city manager recruitment services. Staff report?
Mayor, city council, our city attorney is gonna present this report.
Thank you, mayor and council. Uh, as everyone is aware, the city's former city manager, uh, submitted his retirement, uh, effective May 22nd, 2020. So as a result, we currently have a, uh, vacancy in the permanent position of city manager. So, uh, the city attorney's office solicited some proposals from firms that do executive recruitments, uh, specifically for public agencies. I solicited proposals from seven recruitment firms to assist the city with performing a city attorney, uh, city manager recruitment. And six of those firms responded with proposals. All of those six proposals are attached to the staff report tonight. The purpose of this item tonight is for the city council to discuss and select one of those firms if you so choose to, um, and then direct staff to enter into a contract with that recruiting firm, uh, in a form approved by the city attorney. The, uh, proposals that are attached to the staff report, uh, there's a lot of information in there, but just as some quick points of summer, to summarize some of the points, um, they are all around the cost of about $25,000, um, give or take. And they all propose a schedule for, uh, the beginning of the process to the hire date of the new city manager of about, between 12 and 16 weeks. And a lot of the difference there in the length of time is just because some of them have, uh, proposed shorter or longer times for the period that they're gonna advertise the position and make calls through their network trying to get candidates for the position. So it really, uh, as far as cost and as far as length of time, uh, the proposals are similar in those aspects. Like I said, there are six proposals. All of them do, except for, uh, well, all of them include a guarantee. They say that it is, is, uh, generally accepted industry practice to have a guarantee that if the person after being hired, if the new city manager after being hired leaves the position within a year, then they will do another recruitment for us, uh, without charging their professional fee. All we would need to do is charge, uh, all we would need to do is pay for the expenses, the reimbursable expenses. Um, and all of them except two include a guarantee that if their first round of advertising for candidates does not result in any candidates there, that are acceptable to the council, uh, then they will do a second round of advertising, uh, the position and including a second round of interviews with the city council, um, also for free, except for the city has to pay their reimbursable expenses. The two firms that do not give that, uh, second guarantee are the Bob Murray firm and the Tri-Peppy Smith firm. I would also note, as part of this staff report, that if the city council wanted to do in-person interviews with these recruiting firms, that is also an option. Um, I did not ask them all to appear tonight, but, um, if the council wanted to hold interviews with the recruiters before they selected one, then we could set that up. It would, of course, cause a delay in the process of finding a new city manager. So with that, I will open it up to council for questions, uh, or a discussion about these proposals and which one you might wanna select.
I have one question. Has your, your firm ever interacted with any of these firms here?
Uh, yes. I know for certain that my firm has interacted with the Peckham and McKinney firm, the Bob Murray firm. I know for certain those two, but I would expect that at some point, my firm has interacted with probably all of these firms.
I mean, I just wonder if you had any recommendations? They all seem to be pretty much the same.
Yeah, I, I agree with you that they are all similar when you look at the proposals. So I don't feel that I'm in a position to choose one over the other or make a recommendation of one over the other.
Obviously, the first two, the Avery and the Bob Murray are the most well-known. They're all over the place.
I'll add, I, you know, I agree with Dennis that they all look very similar. Um, but Peckham and McKinney stands out more to me at this point, just because the communities they have experience in.
Which, which one?
Uh, Peckham and, uh, McKinney. It looks like they've recruited for Glendora, they've recruited for Azusa, uh, some of these areas this way. I like that they have a little bit of insight to the San Gabriel Valley, uh, and that's, I haven't seen that in some of these other ones.
They're also the most expensive.
Are they?
I'm partial to Peckham and McKinney for the same reason, but, uh, in addition to working in the area, it was also very recent, uh, it looks like. Azusa, they recruited four in 2018, and Glendora was 2018 as well, so they're not, you know, too far in the, in the past.
Yeah.
One of the unique things that I'd add about Peckham and McKinney, just since two of the council members pointed them out, is that they were one of the two firms that affirmatively contacted me before I contacted them. So the, uh, the member of that firm contacted me when he learned that our prior city manager had retired. The, the other firm to do that was the, uh, Tri-Peppy Smith firm.
You know, I agree with, uh, what you guys said about having a little bit of experience out here and in cities more our size. That, that's a plus. What is the, uh, difference in the, in the price? I didn't really notice that.
So the Peckham and McKinney firm is a $26,000 fee, and that's all-inclusive, their professional fee plus the reimbursable expenses. It's all, uh, included in the $26,000. The other firms are just, uh, a small amount less. So the Avery firm is 24.9, the Bob Murray firm is 24.4, the CPS firm is 25,000. Ralph Anderson is 24.750, and the Tri-Peppy Smith is 23.500.
Does their location make any difference to us, where they are located?
Um, as far as price is concerned?
Not price, I'm just, as far as access.
It very well could. If, I mean, there are some firms here that are headquartered in Northern California, um, and they put in their proposals that they often come down to Southern California, and they'd be willing to come down to Southern California to meet with the council. But it may, it may be more likely that if the council wants to have multiple meetings with the firms, then a firm located in Southern California is gonna be more willing to send someone here in person than a firm that's in Northern California.
So where is Peckham and McKinney excellent?
Roseville.
Roseville. And they, uh, under additional costs, they go to additional onsite meeting day, say if we wanna commute with them for a day, it's an additional $1,000 plus travel. And so then each additional back, background check we ask is 300. So their 26,000, uh, could rapidly increase considerably if we needed more meetings with them.
Right, but those are for additional. So included are all the background checks of all of the candidates that are selected as the top few candidates. If you wanted additional full background checks, then that would be the extra cost. And then the additional, um, in-person meetings are additional to the ones that are included in the package. And I can't remember right now exactly how many are included in the Peckham and McKinney package.
And if, for some reason, we hired, we did hire a city manager, but one of those other candidates, um, applied for something else, a parks director, okay? We gotta pay them under $5,000 if this person hires on within a year?
If the city of San Dimas hires an additional candidate from among those recommended for another position, within one year of the close of recruitment, a fee of 5,000 will be charged to the city, yes. So if one of the candidates, if we, if the city hires one of the candidates, not a city manager, but some other position, we have to pay Peckham and McKinney $5,000, yes.
They must have some good, uh, databases, I suppose.
Yes. Okay, any, any, any further discussion? Any, any?
I noticed that Bob Murray's also located in Roseville.
Must have a good tax base up there. I gotta, I gotta tell you, I've read, I've read them all, and I'm about as confused as you can get.
Jeff, what was your experience with Peckham and McKinney, with your firm? I mean, are they, I mean, obviously, they're aggressive, it sounds like, and are they equally as responsive? Do they produce?
I have not heard anything bad about Peckham and McKinney.
How about any of my others?
Or from other, others in the industry.
I have no preference. It's fine.
I mean, I, I think. I don't, because I don't, I've read them, I've read them all, and, you know, I, we like putting them in a bucket and pulling out a name, but.
I am. I'm just leaning towards the fact that I see the foothill belt. I mean, Sierra Madre, Glendora.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I'm, I'm in line with Peckham and McKinney just because it looks like Dwardy's on here. I mean.
Is that a motion, sir?
I will make a motion for Peckham and McKinney.
We should really see if there's any public comment first.
I withdraw my motion from the public comment.
We'll open it up for public, public comment. Uh, anyone like to call in? Give us a call. Phone number's on the television.
About this issue.
About this issue. Yeah, that's, thanks, John. So anyone interested in talking about the city manager, uh, position, recruiters, please give us a call. Give you about a minute, minute and a half, two minutes at the most. John, anybody? Seeing none, we'll close, uh, and go, come back to the council.
I'll move, uh, for, uh, to select Peckham and McKinney as the firm.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion moves, passes five zero. We'll move on to the next, uh, next issue. Successor agency and the city council. I'll close the city council meeting and open up the successor agency. License for site and, and provisioned security services agreement with Curative for temporary employee parking at 344 West Bonita. Emergency order of the city council exempting Curative from certain development and permitting requirements for off-site parking. Staff?
Yes, mayor, city council, our city attorney will be addressing this item.
Thank you, mayor and city council. The first item in business is, uh, council member Ebner, because this item, uh, involves the vacant successor agency site at 344 West Bonita. That is within 500 feet of council member Ebner's, uh, property, and therefore, he should recuse himself because of the.
I'll recuse myself, and, uh, I was gonna ask for a break anyway, so thank you.
He's a land baron.
Okay, uh, thank you, mayor and council. Tonight, uh, as you are aware, Curative Inc. is a company that's located here in San Dimas that, um, is an essential business and a very important business for public health and safety during the pandemic that we are currently experiencing, um, related to COVID-19. What Curative does is they perform the, uh, laboratory tests on COVID-19 tests that patients have taken and determine whether those tests are positive or negative for COVID-19. So they are a laboratory. And they approached the city with a request to, um, for a location for additional off-site parking for their business. Because we have, as the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency, a vacant parcel, uh, at 344 West Bonita, um, it was decided that, uh, we would propose the use of that site, or I guess Curative requested it, uh, for Curative's off-site parking. So, uh, staff worked to prepare the draft license agreement that is attached to the staff report that would allow Curative to use that site, um, for its off-site parking. And, uh, working with Public Works, uh, we're requiring as part of the license agreement that the parking only take place in a certain portion of the site that is outlined in Exhibit A to the agreement. And there are some reasons for this, but, uh, the reason that the parking needs to be located, uh, a distance from Bonita is because the Gold Line authority is going to need access to the site and will need, uh, to do work on the site, and, um, we need to make sure that the parking for Curative is not interfering with the Gold Line's ability to do that work. Uh, a few other terms of the license agreement is that the, uh, parking is going to be allowed, or the, the term of the agreement. It currently states that it is until December 30th, 2020, or until the site is sold by the successor agency to a developer or any other person, um, whichever occurs first. Or the agreement can be terminated by any party upon 30 days' notice. So, um, as it says in the staff report, one of the things that we were not able to do before this staff report is, was written, is to give the actual lease to Curative and get their comments back on the language. So one of the comments that we received today, just today, from Curative on the language in the agreement, is that they would like to have the, um, ability to extend the term of the license agreement, uh, from December, once December 30th, 2020 rolls around, they would like to have the option to extend the term to December 31st, 2021, so another year. they would like to have the option to extend the term to December 31st, 2021, so another year. And staff is okay with that option as long as we still have the provision in the agreement that we or Curative are able to terminate the license agreement at any time with 30 days' notice. So we came to an agreement with, on that with Curative today. And I have amendment to the license agreement to reflect that, that I'm gonna need to read into the record tonight. The license agreement requires Curative to provide security services to the site in exchange for being allowed to park there. And this is to maintain adequate security measures to protect the site from trespassers or dumping or any entry by other unauthorized parties. Since we are, this is a successor agency parcel that is the council and the public knows is currently being considered by developer for potential purchase and development. The license agreement also requires Curative to allow any potential purchaser of the site to access the site for any due diligence that they need to do, any testing that they need to do in connection with their potential purchase of the site upon 48 hours' notice to Curative, and Curative is, is okay with that. The agreement also requires Curative to make some improvements to the site, including gravel cover on the parking area, a widening of the entrance driveway that is along Acacia. And it actually also requires all ingress and egress onto the site to, to be from that driveway from Acacia. It is going to require also some removal of trees that currently interfere with the pathway onto the parking area from that driveway. It's going to require the removal of a curb and it's gonna require certain grading. And Sherry Garwick, our Public Works Director, is here if the council has questions about what those improvements that are going to be required before Curative can start parking, what those are.
Who's paying for these improvements?
Curative is required to pay for these and do these improvements before they start parking. And they have agreed to, to that being a condition of the license agreement. One of the other things that is attached to your staff report is an emergency order that's waiving certain requirements of our municipal code to allow this off-site parking by Curative. So the reason that we're able to do this is because we're currently under a state of local emergency that the council declared. And when we have a state of local emergency, that gives the council the authority to adopt emergency orders. So our, in, in, during regular times, our municipal code would require a CUP for a business to do off-site parking. So that would be an application, planning commission hearings for approval. It also requires that any off-site parking has to be within 1,000 feet of the business. And this parking is not within 1,000 feet. It also requires that the parking has to be on asphalt paving. And there are a few other requirements, like installing landscaping in the parking lot and, and some other more minor regulations. So what staff is proposing here is for the council to, if you wish, adopt an emergency order that would waive those parking regulations and allow Curative to begin parking on the site, only doing the improvements that are required by the license agreement. And the findings for the emergency order can be made because of the nature of Curative's business being an essential business that is essential for protecting life and health during the COVID-19 emergency. So those are the two items that staff is, that is before the council tonight for the council to consider. The first is to authorize the mayor, successor agency chairperson, BIDAR, to execute the license agreement. And then to adopt the emergency order that's attached as attachment B to the staff report to waive the regular municipal code parking lot requirements. And on the request of Curative to have the option to renew for a year, in order to make that change, Section 2 of the license agreement would need to be amended to read as follows, and I'm just gonna read the entire thing. "The term of this license shall commence as of the date hereof and terminate upon the earlier of: (1) the sale of the parcel by the agency to any end user; (2) any earlier termination of this license per the terms of this Section 1 or 2; (or 3) December 31st, 2020. If the license is not terminated pursuant to 1 or 2 above by December 31st, 2020, then Curative shall have the option to extend the term of the license to December 31st, 2021, provided that Curative gives notice of its intent to exercise the option to the agency by November 15th, 2020, and provided that any such extension shall remain subject to termination pursuant to subdivisions 1 and 2 above. In addition, at any time, the parties may mutually agree to extend the term by written agreement. And either party may elect to terminate this license before the end of the term or before the end of any extension of the term by giving written notice to the other party not less than 30 days prior to the requested termination date." So with that amendment, staff is asking the council to consider these two items tonight, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions for Jeff? Dennis?
No.
Okay, should we, is this, would this be a public hearing?
It's not a public hearing, but we should see if there's any public comment, just because the public's not able to be here in person.
Okay, if, if you have a question and you wanna call in, we'll give it a couple of minutes and the phone number's on the tele, television.
I'd also add that while we're waiting for the callers, just based on the city manager's communications with Curative today, they are very appreciative that the city is offering this option up to them for their, or their needed off-site employee parking. But they did note that they are looking at other options as well, other parking lots that are near to them. And they are asking that the council approve this agreement tonight so that they can choose the city's lot if they would like to, but they are also looking at other options at the same time.
We have no, no phone calls, so at this point, we'll bring it back to the council.
I'll move that we authorize successor agency chairperson to execute license agreement as amended with the language provided by the city attorney with Curative Inc. attached, an attachment A to the staff report.
Any comments? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right.
Measure leads four to, four to zero. John Ebner abstained and had to recuse himself.
All right, and then I would.
Oh, we gotta do the emergency order thing.
Then I would move we adopt the emergency order as attached in the staff report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Four zero with one abstention. Got it? Hey, John?
I would just add for the benefit of the community to know that Curative Inc. has been very involved in COVID-19 testing throughout the county. And frankly, has been spending some money locally supporting our local restaurants for all of their staff. And so I'm appreciative for all the lifesaving work they're doing that changes the level of care for people who may be suffering from the pandemic.
You know, I've never heard of Curative. But they came in here almost like overnight from the, from the Bay Area and they just did a lot, started doing a lot of good work. And as Ryan said, they've been very, very supportive of, of our local restaurants to the tune of somewhere between three, 300 and 900 meals a day. So they, they're feeding their people three times a day and they got about a staff of 300. So they're, they're actually spending some money keeping some of our restaurants and doing a really good job and, and they're very supportive of the community.
And to the mayor's point, they're also staying in our hotels.
They're staying in our hotels, too. They're not only in Holiday Inn, but they're in Motel 6. They're, they're a little bit spread out all over the community. So they're, they're, they're good for us and I'm glad that we can be, be able to help them, help them out. Okay, yeah, we'll move to oral communications. Members of the audience, speakers are limited to five minutes or may be determined by the chair. So we, we'll open it up for oral communications. This is on anything. Okay, we have four as of right now. We'll go with the first one.
Thank you for calling your live.
Hi, my name is Dr. Andrea Poma and I'm the dean of students at San Dimas High School. I'm also a Black American. And after listening to my students and several of our staff members speak and our families, I felt free to call in so that I could share my stories. I support a resolution denouncing George Floyd's death, police brutality, racism, and injustice. This is a major issue plaguing the San Dimas community. For three years, I have listened as Black families detailed their accounts of being subjected to racial slurs in the community and on the campus of San Dimas High School. When I attempted to advocate for them, I was often gaslighted and told that their report was an exaggeration of the truth. Our students have been told that this, this by other adults citing that racism, excuse me, that that kind of thing didn't exist at San Dimas High School. On several occasions, I was asked to call law enforcement on Black male and female students on matters instigated by school staff. When I was accused, I was often called a racist racist while aggressive staff members aimed it was to put our Black students in their place, were called rock stars. I fought at nauseam to keep Black boys out of segregated programs for the emotionally disturbed and against placing Black students up for expulsion or infraction where the video evidence proves that they had not committed infactions that they were accused of. When I started to expose racism and discrimination, petitions were drawn up to remove me from my position. Staff members were asked to report lies about me and I was told through logical reasons like your face makes me uncomfortable. Black staff members were also asked to lie about me because, and I proved, it has to come from a Black person so that it doesn't seem like it's about race, which means it was always about race. On the day before the school closure, I was sent a picture of some markings on the walls of San Dimas High School and the markings read S and were spoken of. Racism is an issue in San Dimas and enough is enough. Our children, staff, and community deserve to feel safe. I lived in San Dimas for five years and I'll be honest with you and say that I would not move back. Our community should not have to advocate for our humanity teaching every day. Our children should not have law enforcement used as a weapon against them and we should be granted our God-given rights to breathe. So I really hope we're able to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Yeah, I had, yeah, barely. I got, I got the gist of it, though.
Thank you for calling your live.
Hi, this is Chloe Jones again. I just wanted to point out there, in no way am I gonna be against the police in any of this or even the military. I come from a very strong military family and have had to send my father away to go fight for our freedom multiple times. And that even includes him not being there when my little sister was born. And so I just wanted to put that out there as I read off what I'm about to say because I'm going to express what has happened to many of the students in San Dimas High School and not just me. I've been told by one of my friends that he was called the N-word with a hard R and told to go back to his country. He is a Black student. And he was told this in middle school. Another friend told me that she was called a Black B-word and a ghetto B-word. She got into an argument with another student and had a teacher tell her to stop being so Black. She ran our school's BSU at the time and they would not allow her to put up posters or include her in routes. She said that she basically felt excluded from the school. When I asked her if she ever tried to put in reports or make a statement about what happened, she said that she did. And when she went to report the incident to the school, all they had her do was write a statement on a pink sheet of paper and she never heard anything else. Another statement is I talked to one of my best friends, who I know her whole family, and they've been going to the church one and all for many years, about five. And her brother and, one of her brothers and some more family members were at the church for their youth group shift. It was after it had ended, but everybody was still there waiting to get picked up. They came to go get some water from the drinking fountain and they had the police called on them. They had a gun pulled on them. And one of them was placed in handcuffs. Mind you, her brother is a minor. Now, you also have students at San Dimas who are asked to, for kids to say the N-word every single day. On a good day, we might get asked 10 times. On a bad day, you get asked upwards of 100 times just people berating you to say it. Kids asking to touch my hair because they think it's cool and different, when to me it's normal. And asking to touch my hair makes me seem like I'm an animal in a zoo, when there were human zoos. This is common practice for Black students at San Dimas. Something that Mexican students at the high school have seen is that this past year, there was a Dress Like a Cholo Day organized by one of the seniors in which text or something on Snapchat was sent out. And it read, "Attention seniors, dressed as cholos and cholas, when tomorrow for what revenge and fun, bring toilet paper for a break, for a prank during break." That is offensive to all people who are Latino, Latina, Latinx. That is just beyond offensive, actually. I've had friends who are Asian and Pacific Islander who are told, "Oh, they should be good at this class just because they're Asian or they should be getting good grades because of that fact." This problem is just astounding because it hurts us. It drains us mentally. It drains us emotionally. And sometimes it even takes a toll on our mental health, giving a lot of kids depression, anxiety, and so much more. There are even statistics to prove it. I once was trying to bring back to the school BSU because it did go away for a little while there. And I had students telling me if they could be the Grand Wizard. That is not okay. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more? We have indication of one more call.
Thank you for calling your live.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is Mr. Gonzalez. This is a trifecta for me tonight. I guess the, the COVID-19 has got me down quite a bit and having spare time to talk to you. I wanted to clarify something that I said earlier. If we wanna make a difference in the world, in our country, in our state, we must register to vote and we must vote. I, I don't know if the city manager has talked to the city clerk, but if you open up our website, it has a little thing there that says "vote." And it makes reference to county agencies. And I don't think that's the way it should be. It should say specifically, if you wanna vote, come down here to register. It will tell you how to fill out the form and mail it for you if you want or whatever. And also, if you wanna vote by mail, this is how you do it. That's my suggestion. I'm not against people protesting, but as you can see, where there was some discussion which I disagree with, I think the sheriff has done a great job. I would think it would have been wrong for the sheriff to be out in front in the crowd. They allowed people to be Americans and say what they wanna say and, you know, whether you're for or whatever the COVID-ish thing is or COVID-19 is, the sheriff did a wonderful job one way or the other. In reference to what I'm talking about, I've talked to Mrs. Black, Ms. Black, and also she said that she was gonna talk to the city clerk, excuse me, to the assistant city manager and present it to you as whether we should change the diagrams on the website. And I don't know if that's been done or not, but I still think it should be. And I don't know if that's been done or not, but I still think it should be done where it specifically tells you how to vote and where you can register in the city. And the reason why I bring that up is because, for example, we have a symbol on the website that says coyote, whatever it says coyote. It's got a little box and it says coyote. Now, when we call the coyote thing, or excuse me, when we pop that up, all it does is make reference to other agencies. I don't know, it doesn't say, "Or if you don't want to go to call the county, you can call me in the city." And the reason why I say that is because when you contact the information about the coyotes, it says that you should not put your trash cans out the night before the trash is picked up. Everybody, including myself, maybe the whole city, puts their trash out the night before. So, you can see there's a discrepancy. I don't like the idea of referring city people to other agencies unless they give us the option to talk to somebody in the office. So, I don't know what you would say that. I guess everybody's got to wake up before seven o'clock in the morning to put the trash out, but I don't think you would like that. So, I wanted to talk to you about that. I think, number one, let me say it again, whether or not I suggested that Assistant City Manager discuss with you how we post, where we can register to vote and make some notes in there that we could do it at the city hall. Secondly, as a member of the Public Safety Commission, and I'm sure Mayor Bader was there, I had asked for some research to be done as to the security measures at the schools so that we could include money to work with the schools to make sure that we have proper cameras and so on and so forth. We've gone to Lone Hill and there's not one camera anywhere that is recorded by anybody for any situation and we had quite a few shutdowns last year and they still haven't addressed it. And that's up, well, it's five minutes, right? And they've, I've asked for that. I've also asked, and the mayor was there, that we attend some other emergency exhibits for our quake process that we have at quake, I don't know what they call it right now, my brain's a little off, but, you know, in October, we have that and I have been there. I've been certified by the state and also FEMA to deal with earthquakes and you're not doing it right. And I've pointed out to that before. I've talked to the Mayor Curtis about it. I talked to John about it. I don't really think that we should have it over there at the Sheriff's Department. It should be held over here in our city conference, city hall, but again, you haven't said anything about it. I know we hadn't had any meetings about it, but I just want to let you know, we don't have, we have no report as to what sort of cameras we have at the schools. I haven't heard about the earthquakes and how we construct them. We're not doing it right. And the mayor said, "You know, that might be a good idea for one of us or some of our staff to go see how other cities are doing it." Another thing, Mr. Mayor, I would wonder if you would consider that we establish a policy that people cannot wear anything on their mask that allows anything. I don't know what Ryan's wearing tonight, but I think it's wrong for us not to tell everybody that works for the city or represents the city that they could put anything on their face. You know, some guy could put a Confederate, he could put, I don't know what, he could put, I don't know what Ryan's wearing or not wearing.
Mr. Gonzalez, we're done.
But I don't, I think we should put a policy out there that if you put something over your mouth, it should be plain with nothing on it.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Your time is up.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Anybody else? We got one more.
Thank you for calling your live.
Good evening again, city council and committee members. This is Crystal Bacon again and I am calling in to speak on some remaining topics. Well, I do understand, hearing from your earlier statements, that there was no previous discussion of any type of statement, stance, or resolution which was being drafted. And I would like to say that this is a bit disappointing. I would like to speak to this a bit more, as I do wonder why there was no conversation between the city council. In hearing the pastor speak earlier in regards to his experiences over decades of his residency within the city, it's disheartening because it questions whether or not the city of San Dimas is wanting to or willing to address and make changes. I have some questions that I would like to ask the city council to consider. Why are we as residents and parents and students having to call in and request that this type of change take place? Why is something so important which affects the lives of our children and the future of the city and country not already on the table for discussion? Council members, I would not list the experiences which my husband, my daughters, and I have experienced on anyone because it is truly disgusting and gut-wrenching. It's terrible. I, it brings tears to my eyes to sit here and listen to children recount traumatic events that they've experienced in our schools, as I am very sure that this is uncomfortable for you as adults to hear as well. This is not something which we can continue to ignore and say, "Not in our city, not our residents, not our children, not our schools." I'm tired of hearing that nothing happens in San Dimas, but at the same time, I'm starting to see and feel as though nothing happens in San Dimas. When Dr. King marched with this country, within this country, there were three types of people and communities who watched. There were those who were persecuted. This was Dr. King and his allies who marched beside him, who were hosed, jailed, beaten, had dogs fix on them, watched their homes burn, their families threatened, and faced pain, all in support of equal human rights. There were those who persecuted. These were people who perpetuated this immense amount of hate and the supporters and the people who actually did all of these actions. Lastly, there was an entire population who shrugged and said, "Well, it's not me, it's not right, but, you know, it's not our problem, it's not in our backyard." Mayor Bader, Mayor Pro Tem Vienna, Councilmember Bertrand, Councilmember Ebner, Councilmember Weber, I am here today to appeal to your hearts as sons, as husbands, as fathers, as friends, and most importantly, as humans. I'm here today to challenge that you guys not accept the adoption of a resolution, but that you guys take it upon yourselves to be agents of change for this community, this community that is crying out because, as Mayor Pro Tem Vienna stated, San Dimas is not a city which lacks compassion. If San Dimas is truly the city which is deeply concerned with its public safety, then we are asking, begging, pleading that you guys take a stand and lead your residents by example. I challenge you guys as the city council to lead from a place of compassion and impart upon your residents that all injustices and systemic racism are items that San Dimas will not stand for and will put an absolute end to. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see we have no more calls. I'll give it about 30 seconds. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, City Council. In an effort to support local restaurants, we are allowing permitted temporary outdoor dining in the city. Any restaurant or brewery is eligible. This will allow restaurants and breweries to use parking lots, sidewalks, and other common areas as an extension for the dining area. Even allow for alcohol services on a temporary basis, subject to obtaining a permit from the planning department. I want to thank the community development staff and specifically Assistant Planner Ken Fickelman for putting this together in a relatively short order. City Hall reopened to the public this Monday. City Hall is now open during regular operating hours, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. The city's developed a plan to help reduce the chances of exposure and protect everybody's safety. At City Hall, social distancing will be enforced and the city will require anybody that's visiting City Hall to wear a mask. Individuals that cannot visit City Hall and need to make a payment for permits, plan checks, tax payments, or business license can do so on our website. And while City Hall is reopened, all other city public facilities will continue to be closed to the public at this time due to state and county guidelines and will reopen as soon as possible. In addition, last item, the annual barbecue. I just want to report that the Chamber's Annual Barbecue Committee has provided the recommendation on a contingency plan for the barbecue. What they're recommending is a virtual activities and Facebook Live Week from August 1st to the 8th. The events would include Restaurant Week for food specials, deals for participating restaurants and breweries, cafes, to promote the birthday celebration, a marketing campaign leading up to the event with mailers, social media posts, street banners, and a social media campaign with community participation, daily theme highlights leading up to the Saturday, August 8th end date. Solicited photos, 10-second videos, and Chamber volunteers will put together daily social postings. With that, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Any questions of the city manager?
I just want to thank Brad and staff especially for moving quickly on that, getting the sidewalks and the outdoor dining and all that arranged. I know at least one restaurant, I'm not sure if there's been more, but we encourage people to do that. So, it's great in the times we are in.
And I understand that could be a telephonic permit? Is that true?
I'm going to refer to Henry Noor, Community Development Director. Telephonic, they can get this permit over the phone? Is that what you refer to?
That's the way I understand, but is that right or wrong or anything? I've had two restaurants tell me that.
Well, we've reached out, but there is a link on our website. It's a, it's a paper application. There's no fee with it, but there are certain requirements inside plan, things that we provided as examples of what would be required to do this and it's pretty much an over-the-counter permit to do this during this pandemic.
Have we been in contact with ABC concerning some of these restaurants that like, you know, would serve, would serve beer or wine?
So, ABC put out recently that they're allowing for the outdoor sale of alcohol in conjunction with some food users. They just need to contact, the restaurants need to contact ABC for some type of administrative permit as well for that.
Super. Thank you.
Mayor, I think what you're referring to, they can, applicants can call in and also submit their application online. They don't technically have to come in to City Hall.
Yeah, they'd be able to mail it in. And we have gotten, so staff actually hand-delivered to each restaurant locally and we've had good results.
We did hand-deliver some?
Yeah, to all of them. So, we did that and then social media blast, emails, blast, and there's notification on our city website as well.
Super. I too was along with John and everybody up here saying, "Thank you guys for jumping on that because I think these businesses will be very, very appreciative that we've done it." And I'm sure the businesses are, but I can tell you the community is. People look, looking for places to go to restaurants. I haven't been to a restaurant yet that every table hasn't been occupied with, you know, with the social distancing because they're down, you know, they're putting basically 50% of their customers, you know, are still having to come in and either wait a period of time or whatever. So, whatever we can do, I thank you guys very much for jumping on it.
Yep, thank you.
And that's, that's it there, Mr. Manager? Okay. Members of the city council, I'm going to start to my left and go around this time. Normally, we start a different way, but we're going to start doing things a little bit different.
That's a good idea.
So, that's going to be you. You. Councilman Weber.
First of all, thank you to city staff and San Dimas heroes and also the citizens of the city of San Dimas for being so hospitable to the National Guard while they were in town for a couple of days. Obviously, they were ensuring the safety of cities, not just here, but also all around the county. And I was particularly disappointed that other cities in the county were less than hospitable to them. I just really appreciate that San Dimas is a place that's willing to support our troops when they need that support the most. It's not just a hollow, meaningless, "We support the troops." We, our actions actually backed that up. So, that's important to me. Speaking on the George Floyd matters, I'm obviously very closely tied to the law enforcement community, but with that being said, I'm very supportive of finding ways to continually better many facets of government and that includes law enforcement. And it pains me to hear the public comment where people are providing examples of incidents happening here locally. That's not something that I typically hear and I definitely empathize with them. That's not something that I want to hear about in our city. One of the callers said, "We can't just say 'not in our city' to put off the problem." And I totally agree with that, but I can say "not in our city" and that racism, in my opinion, is not welcome in our community. Going back toward the, the community involvement and, and working to better police departments, a little bit of history, back in 2015, President Barack Obama assembled a task force on the 21st, he called it the Task Force on 21st Century Policing. And that brought together a lot of stakeholders in the law enforcement and, law enforcement community and the community at large from all around the country. And they collectively came up with a plan to move forward and progress our communities and the law enforcement profession in the, in the future. It established six critical pillars and those were building trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, training and education, and officer wellness and safety. After years of law enforcement agencies and the communities working toward those goals listed in that report, many of which there have been large strides made towards, it seems like there's a whole different set of demands that are now being asked of the law enforcement community and specifically some defunding movements that are concerning to me because that would absolutely undermine the work of the Task Force on 21st Century Policing, which I think did a very good job of bringing together a lot of the different elements that we need to consider as we move forward, one of which obviously being, you know, training and education, community policing and crime reduction. Those things would have a hard time continuing if we move forward and really seriously talk about defunding police departments. That's concerning to me. And moving on, but kind of on a related note, I suppose, I want to point out that 25 years ago today, Glendora Police Agent Louis Pompey was shot and killed while he was attempting to stop an armed robbery and assault that was occurring at the Via Verdi Vons here in San Dimas. The first few lines of the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics state that "As a law enforcement officer, my fundamental duty is to serve the community, safeguard lives and property, to protect the innocent against deception, the weak against oppression or intimidation, and the peaceful against violence or disorder." And even in his last act, Agent Pompey exemplified that code. The men and women of the Glendora Police Department had plans for a large remembrance today at the memorial park here next to the Via Verdi Vons for the 25th anniversary of his death, unfortunately, but due to the COVID-19 and civil unrest situations that are going on right now, it necessitated the postponement of that memorial. They did put on a small thing today at the park, limited the number of people there, but I was very happy to see a, a large number of our San Dimas deputies were there to represent the city of San Dimas, which I appreciate very much. So, thank you to the San Dimas deputies that were there. I want to take a moment just to recognize Louis' sacrifice on the anniversary of his death and reaffirm San Dimas' promise to remember his legacy. And I think that's all I've got for now.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis.
Okay. One of the problems with the situation that we have here is that the public is obviously not allowed to come in. That's a problem because we oftentimes have people come here that have done extraordinary things and we honor them. And two people that we'd like to honor tonight is, they don't have the opportunity to come and talk themselves, the older American honorees, and that's Alta Skinner and Margie Green. And just to give you an idea of Alta Skinner, she's a member of the San Dimas Boosters. She was co-chairperson of the Sportplex Fundraising Committee. She was on the Senior Commission, Board of Directors of the Festival of Arts, Tri-City Mental Health, Youth and Family Commission, and so forth. Margie Green has been president of the Historical Society, San Dimas Chamber of Commerce, Festival of Arts, Board of Directors of the McKinley Children's Center, Benita Corridor Committee, Parks and Recreation Commission, and she's presently a planning commissioner. And it's just a shame, I look forward to when people can come in, we can honor, we've honored students and athletes and all sorts of people. And this is just an example of the quality of people that we have here in the city of San Dimas. The other thing is, to change the subject, is we talked about Senate Bill 902, and we're going to have a discussion of that at the next city council meeting, which is on the 26th. And that's a bill that takes away much of the authority of the local cities in the planning and the San Dimas, not San Dimas, the San Gabriel Valley Cog has suggested that the cities take a stand against this, and we will bring that up next, in our next city council meeting. And that's it, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Ryan? Few comments, I'm trying to sort my thoughts. First to Ms. Jambertolo, I want to acknowledge your comments with regards to performance metrics from the Parks and Recreation Department. You are correct that we have seen, I know the council has seen, at least I've seen numerous reports that do show some of those numbers. So I do want to acknowledge that, and I hear you. My comments are more generally focused, and so thank you though for pointing that out. For Mr. Gonzalez, if you shop local, you'd absolutely recognize the mask I'm wearing from the San Dimas Barber Shop, but I suppose you haven't been by there lately. So if you stop by, I'm sure you can get yourself one of these nice masks if you support a local barber shop. And as it relates to voting fees, we all pay those voting fees, and I think staff can probably explain that, or if you contact the city clerk, she can explain it to you just the same way we all were explained about it, and you could further understand that. So feel free to contact the city clerk and seek those answers for which all of us have had to seek as well. And, you know, I was going to let it go, Gil, but how dare you? I hope my ears deceive me when I play back your comments. I really do. Shame on you, Gil. That's all I'm going to say about that. Shame on you. As it relates to the matters pertaining to the last two weeks, I'll agree with some of the callers that enough is enough. I was probably the first council member to publicly condemn the actions by the police officers resulting in the death of George Floyd. I made a public statement about that on social media. It was pretty much out there very quickly shortly thereafter. I absolutely condemn racism, I condemn police brutality, and I condemn violence. For the last several days, as you may have heard my wife point out, I've been working in conjunction with my day job, as some of you know, in law enforcement, and really saw what the community's outcry was about this, both in my role in law enforcement and my role as an elected official and community leader. And I'll agree that enough is enough, as someone pointed out. And I agree that agencies all over should have implicit bias training. I hear the concern for the school district and the youth in our school district. I was disturbed by many of the comments on Twitter, as a matter of fact, that seemed to come from a lot of our youth in our community, that have a lot of varying opinions. And it's very clear that I think our school district needs to have an open and honest discussion about racism and about a number of these topics. You know, I would have been at the protest, but not all of us got a personal invite by the organizers. As a matter of fact, you know, I just happened to hear about it because I saw some updates from the city. But before there was an, or one protest, which is the one where it sounds like Councilman Ebner went to, I'll have you know that there were people out there for at least two days before that effort. And I did go out there and stand and meet a family that was standing out there, a father, a daughter, and a sister, actually. And I had the opportunity to talk with them, and I thank Brad, who I was able to go out and take some waters to those folks that had been standing out there. I was driving home from work and saw them standing out there with their signs, and actually came back to City Hall to go out and talk to them and learn more about them and seek further understanding from them. They live in our community, and, you know, we had a interesting dialogue, and that further then went to Nextdoor, where I had posted some comments and some thoughts, that I heard them, that I saw them, and I stand with them in condemning racism and police brutality. To that end, I heard from other community members that expressed some of the same comments tonight, and I've reached out to some of those community members to sit down with them and have a cup of coffee and further the dialogue for which is a little disturbing about their experience here in town. It's disturbing to me that there are people in this community that are afraid to go outside because they live across from the sheriff's station, or because they have, they're a person of color and have concerns about that. Very disturbing, and I think we should talk about some of those things. I think people should engage their city council members, I think they should engage their city, their sheriff's department, their school district, and I'm happy to hear people raising their voices. As far as the protest that I know John was at, I wanted to acknowledge the sheriff's department for ensuring the safety of everyone that day, the members of the community that came out to exercise their First Amendment rights, the members of the community that were concerned about having people have demonstrations and our business community during a time when there were other places in this county and in this state and in this nation that were experiencing violence. The sheriff's deputies took water out to those folks and treated them with dignity and with respect the way we would all hope to. I will add that when I stood out on the street corner, you know, I heard a lot of people days before the protest that John attended, when there was just a couple people out there who were bold and courageous, I think, to stand out there, one person on each corner, I heard the honks of support for their message. So to that end, you know, I absolutely unequivocally condemn the racism and violence, not just there, but even in our community. I also have to point out, as you heard my wife say, the last several days, it's not just been about police brutality, it's also been about brutality against police. In the last two days, over the last 14 days as of two days ago, 28 officers have been shot, four have been killed, and thousands have been injured. I know people that took rocks, bottles, bricks to their helmets, disgusting things, urine and other things thrown at them that I don't think any of us should stand for either. And so as much as I think universally we have to condemn racism, I think ultimately we need to see each other eye to eye and agree that there is just no room for violence and brutality across all of it, every, all the spectrum. And in that vein, you know, Louis Pompey, I want to thank Deborah and staff for the flowers that went out there at the memorial today. I also want to point out that Pat Underwood lost his life in the last two weeks, who was a federal officer up in Oakland. David Dorn, who was a retired captain back east, and most recently Sergeant Damon Gutswilder from Santa Cruz, lost his life. All of it's tragic, and all of it needs to stop, and I'm glad that violence seems to have calmed, and I think that we have to hold space for each other, and I think we have to have open dialogue to be able to find those common grounds and do better. And I think we can do better, and I think we will do better, the way I know this community can and will. I also, as Eric pointed out, some of you may have noticed some Humvees in town a couple days ago, and we ended up putting soldiers from the California National Guard into the Plumber Building. And I want to thank the majority of the members of council that were supportive of this action and were happy to rise to that occasion, to house them and the staff members that made that happen. I think that supporting the National Guard, you know, is kind of crazy to me that, you know, we need them during a difficult time that we were all experiencing, and I'm just very proud of the way that came together. And I'm also very proud of the San Dimas Heroes Organization that provided a hot meal to the soldiers that were staged here for two days. And to that end, you know, to the members of the community that would have preferred or asked or were curious why something wasn't said earlier, I'll just tell you that public safety is a priority. That means the safety of our soldiers, our deputies, and everyone. And as you could tell, as pointed out in some of the stats that I shared with you, it was just a, it was just a time where we needed to be able to get everything together and maintain all public safety for everyone. So with that, I think, oh, the last thing is, there's something called the Justice in Policing Act that will be making its way through Congress very soon. I started reading some of it as Eric shared with some of the, President Obama's 21st Century Policing Task Force. Some of those things, I think, are very helpful, the six pillars. I'd encourage everybody to read those and take a look at that. And I think that there will be progress made in policing. I think that, you know, as a member of law enforcement myself, you know, I can tell you that I absolutely unequivocally, as a matter of fact, when I saw the video of Mr. Floyd, I was in tears. My wife, I watched almost every angle, every moment of it, very sad. But I will say that, you know, the LA County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Villanueva announced yesterday, there's this movement called Campaign Zero, and it aims to be able to share different reforms with organizations. I know there's been members of the community that have reached out to me, asking a lot of questions about law enforcement. I would encourage you to look at the sheriff's department website, lasd.org. The sheriff announced yesterday that the sheriff's department does actually meet all eight of those criteria. Yesterday, the sheriff's department did announce that it moved the carotid restraint into the deadly force category from assault of high risk. And so I think those changes are appropriate, given some of the considerations. And I also think that as Sheriff Villanueva has given direction to the sheriff's department, you might take some time to visit lasd.org/transparency. And if you visit that site, you'll be able to see a number of resources there. But I can tell you, lastly, that I want to thank all the members of the sheriff's department and the fire department who mobilized, and some of the members of the California National Guard who are residents here in our city of San Dimas, and I know some of them personally that works shoulder to shoulder with people, and I'm of all walks of life. Thank all of you for your service during this difficult time in all of our communities. I'm very grateful, I'm very honored to have all of you here, and that's all I got. Thank you.
John?
I'm going to focus on one thing. I often say things off the cuff, but I have a little bit written down here so I don't forget. On May 25th in Minneapolis, George Floyd, a black man, was killed, and it was brutal, abusive, and merciless. People were and are shocked and dismayed at his violent, senseless, uncalled-for killing. The killing of George Floyd has proved to be a tipping point and has re-energized a movement for civil rights, racial justice, equality, and something that's very important, I would like this city council to discuss a resolution regarding these issues. We can't talk about contents right now because it's not on the agenda right now, but if there is another person on the city council who would like to put this on the agenda for the next meeting, I would appreciate it, and we can talk about it at that time, if there is.
John, you know that I always believe that if somebody wants to put something on the agenda, I will second it.
I knew I could count on you. Thank you so much, Emmett. So thank you for that. So it will be on the agenda next meeting. The exact contents are to be determined, and I'll leave it to staff and members of the public, or, you know, maybe me, I'll make some suggestions for that. But I'd like to conclude with a couple remarks, just in general. We, the city council, as representatives of the city of San Dimas, need to stand, we need to stand and say something about racial equality and racial justice. This is an issue that affects us and affects our city. Many people of color in San Dimas feel insulted and are being insulted. They, some are in pain or scared or just mad, and they don't feel like they have a voice or that if they say something, nobody's really listening. So I think this time, just because, just because, I guess because of George Floyd and what happened, this may be different and a lasting change is possible, and I want our city to join the fight against hate and intolerance and to explicitly, explicitly get on the side of people who are being hurt and who are saying enough is enough. It's the right and the righteous thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Just a couple of things. One, as I'd like the staff...
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, mayor. I just wanted to ask, for the agenda item that's going to be at the next council meeting, does the council want staff to prepare a proposed resolution, or is the, is council going to come with a proposed resolution? Because it's a question of how the council wants to spend the staff time.
If it's, I don't know if it's appropriate or not for somebody like me to make some suggestions, or you could look at other cities that have adopted resolutions, because this would not be a first, believe me. So, I mean, I can certainly make some suggestions.
It's up to you. If you want to bring a resolution yourself, you can. If the council wants to direct staff to prepare one, then we'll prepare a proposed one.
Well, I personally would like to have something from staff so that, yeah. Well, I personally would like to have something from staff so that, yeah.
If I can say something, I don't know if you had the opportunity to read, we got an email from the deputy district attorneys. They made a statement, Association of Deputy District Attorneys, LA County. If you have a chance to read it, it is very well balanced and looks at the whole, it condemns what happened, but it looks at the entire picture. I would recommend taking a look at it. In fact, if staff wants to have a copy of it, I can give it to them.
I might just recommend that each and every one of us who want to submit something to the city manager with some ideas and let him decide, you know, how to put something together, I think that might be the best way. That's not to say that it'll get adopted or anything like that. It's to say that it's a good start for us, at least a discussion. Agreed?
Fine.
All right. Is that it?
Yeah. Okay. First off, thank you all for out there, for, you know, sitting through this long, long meeting. I would like to ask the staff, and I don't know that, I never, have never known us to do it, but I would like to ask the staff to provide a copy of the tonight's recording to Carl Coles, the superintendent of schools, so he could pass it on to the school board for these statements that were made. I think they were very, very, they were statements that were from the heart. People had some real concerns. And I think the school board, probably the most appropriate place for half of those comments were to the school board. But we certainly now are in tune to how certain, you know, how people think about, you know, what's going on in our community. So, I think the school board needs to know that. And I think you would need to have a discussion with Carl Coles, you know, administrator to administrator, and let him know that, if you would.
Yes, I'll call him tomorrow.
I don't know if anybody else objects to that, but I think that would be good. I too want to acknowledge the fact that over the weekend, we had a National Guard contingency. One night it was 25, the next night it was 34. And they were very respectful of our community. They were very respectful of our facilities and very thankful that we were, give them a roof over their head, because they had been sleeping out under the stars for a few days. And I too heard from a couple, three or four of them that said, "I've been in the National Guard for 14 years, and I've never seen a community respond and act the way you guys did to us." And I thought that was very telling. I too want to acknowledge the fact that the Heroes Program, I understand that they got notified two hours and 15 minutes prior to them having to feed these people. And they jumped right on it. They made arrangements to have our local restaurants, Casa Del Rey and a chicken place and pizza place. They got them all involved. And in two hours and 15 minutes, they put a meal on the table for all of these guys. They were there early, setting up tables. They actually did a fabulous job, and they were very, very, they represented this community and that program with honor, and I appreciate that. Unlike my, unlike my colleagues, I'm not, I'm not great at ad-libbing, coming off the cuff on things. So, I put down a few thoughts that I would like to just, you know, bring out. I want to know, I want you to know that I value the free speech and the First Amendment rights of all citizens. I encourage peaceful engagement and communications as our residents stand united against criminal actions. The events in Minnesota have shaken people around the country, including many of our residents in San Dimas. I condemn the actions of the manipulous police officers against George Floyd. These actions were against the core values and oath taken by every law enforcement officer. I am personally against any social injustices and support equal rights, opportunists, and safety for everyone. I am proud of our community for conducting a very peaceful protest last Friday. I want to compliment the residents and the earnest spirits of the organizers that came out to protest and show their support peacefully. I hope we can remain united in this reveal, San Dimas, to be an example of the community. With all respect to all. With that, I think Councilman Weber has a...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move adjournment of the meeting in memory of Agent Louis Pompey.
So moved. This meeting's over with?
We're actually going to be going into closed session.
Excuse me. We're going to close this meeting, and we're going to be going off to a closed session. And there was something written on this thing. A conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. And at the end of this, will there be an announcement?
Yes, there will.
Okay. Well, it'll be a televised announcement.
Yes, there's likely to not be a reportable action, but we're going to come back out and say...
The council will return back to the city council chambers. Thank you.
I'm joining via Zoom.
Turn it on, John.
We'll reconvene the city council meeting with a report from our city attorney, Jeff.
Thank you, mayor. The city council met in closed session to discuss the one item of significant exposure to litigation. The council discussed the item with staff, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Any comments? Adjourned.